Fred Moda says it takes a shave for a lot of time.
Yeah, we talked about that when.
We should send a little bit of poor Fred up there. I emailed him. He just can't win for losing pills. Or fire the water. Or emergency room.
Bring the committee of the whole agenda to order, or committee of the whole meeting to order. Public information notices as required under Notice by law one four four dash two thousand and seven. The public is advised of council's intention to adopt the following at its May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two meeting. Adopt a twenty twenty-two municipal operating budget. Appoint a deputy mayor for the balance of term of council. Adopt a lame duck delegation by law. Amend the city's procurement policy. Adopt a new general tariff of fees and charges by law to give effect to new rates in the solid waste division outlined in Schedule D. Authorize a budget amendment in the amount of twelve thousand five hundred plus HST to be funded through the art center reserve for emergency repairs to the art center balcony. Close the road allowances legally identified as PIN four two one six nine dash zero two five zero and a portion of PIN four two one six nine dash zero two nine five and be declared surplus to the requirements of the municipality. Close road allowance legally identified as a portion of PIN four two one six nine dash zero two seven seven and declare surplus to the requirements of the municipality. Authorize a budget amendment in the amount of one thousand seven hundred and one, pardon me, one hundred and seventy-one thousand, two hundred and seventy-two dollars to be funded through the solid waste reserve to complete the phase one perimeter road construction at the Canora area landfill. Could we have a blessing and an acknowledgement, Councilor Smith?
As we gather, we recognize that we are on Treaty Three lands which are steeped in rich indigenous history and home to many First Nations and Native people today. We continue to be thankful for the partnerships with indigenous people. We give thanks for the many blessings we enjoy in the city of Canora. We seek wisdom in our minds, clearness in our thinking, truth in our speaking, and always love in our hearts so it may try always to unite the citizens of Canora, let these principles guide us in our decision making.
Thank you to Councilor Smith. I'll call for a declaration of the cunyary interest in general nature thereof on today's agenda or from a meeting in which a member was not in attendance. And none declared. Confirmation of the previous committee minutes.
Resolution number one, your worship, moved by myself and second by Councilor Van Wellingham, that the minutes from the last regular committee of the whole meeting held April fifth, twenty twenty-two, and the special committee of the whole meetings held April nineteenth and twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, be confirmed as written and filed.
And we have four deputations today. The first deputation might obdoo Public Sector Digest concerning the city's asset management plan.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning. Floor is yours.
Thank you. I will just share my screen here. Everyone should be able to see that. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for having me today. I'm very excited to bring you forward this asset management plan to the city of Canora. It's been more than a year and a making with a lot of concerted effort from staff, various departments to bring you what is quite a reliable and accurate document. So I wanted to start off with just where you are in terms of the regulation with development and the approval of this asset management plan. You will have satisfied the deadline of this Ontario regulation, which is the twenty twenty-four requirement. So you are ahead of many municipalities, most municipalities in Ontario that are still struggling to get to their twenty twenty-two requirements. So it makes you that much closer to the final iteration and requirement of the ORE. So within this twenty twenty-four asset management plan, we included all of your assets. So not just your core assets, you know, that are made up of your roads, bridges, water, waste water and storm, but all of your assets, so vehicles, machinery, your own buildings, land improvement assets. All of those are also included in this asset management plan today. For the twenty twenty-four requirement, we are still looking at current levels of service. So we have not looked at anything proposed or target that is the twenty twenty-five deadline. So within this plan, we've identified those current levels of service, some that are managed by the province, some that staff has selected to assist in decision making that are valuable to track. We've documented how it is that you manage your assets, how it is that you prioritize them, what are some of your growth assumptions, population and demographic forecasts, and employment forecast. All of that is in this asset management plan today. So come twenty twenty-five, it's going to be the same iteration as this one, but with the focus being on proposed or target levels of service. So really, this AMP today is the foundation of for the twenty twenty-five. So I'm going to jump into a few slides in terms of the stats, but I wanted to practice that with what asset management is really. So as we look at those stats and we look at the information in the asset management plan, I want you to look at it through the lens of service maintenance. So all asset management is, is just how we maintain these services that we provide to our district stakeholders. So if you think of your roads and the bridges, those are providing that transportation service. Not only that, they also allow us to provide other forms of services. So if you think of your fire trucks, for example, and if a level of service is to reach their destination in less than four minutes, let's say. If your roads and your bridges are not in the performance or the level of service that they need to be, that will ultimately impact that fire truck and that emergency service as well. So when we're looking at our assets, we don't care too much what they're doing or what we care more about how they're affecting our level of service, how their performance is affecting the service. If you think of your parks and your playgrounds, those are providing a recreational service and how many that matters more than anything else when we're looking at quality of life and being applied more often. So those are the services that are impacted by these assets. And so we took a look at those services and those assets through three main factors. The cost of performance and risk, or CPR, as they like to call it. So similar to how, you know, CPR is an acronym for cardiac resuscitation, that's how we bring someone back to life. CPR, cost, performance, and risk, that's how we break our levels of service to life. That's how we maintain them, sustain them, keep them going. So when we're thinking about costs for our services, that could be the cost of cost to the organization, so to be able to provide that service as a municipality. That could be the cost to the stakeholders, to the public. So how much is it costing them, is it affordable service that we're providing? It could also be the cost of mitigating specific risks. So when we're looking at cost to the service, we're looking at any and every cost that can be part of that equation. When we think about performance for levels of service, we're thinking about things like the quality of the service we're providing, the quantity, so how much of it is there? We're thinking about things like accessibility, that's an element of performance. When you think about facilities especially, how accessible are they? How many of them are accessible? So that's an element of performance for a service. And then finally, risk. So what kind of risks are we willing to tolerate to provide this service? That could be corporate risk, some sort of health and safety liability risk. What are we comfortable with? So that's how we look at it for the levels of service, that's what we did during this project. And by extension, this is what we looked at for the asset. So when you're looking at your level of service, or when you're looking at an asset and you're comparing the cost, performance, and risk, it's very similar to how we're looking at level of service. So when you're looking at your assets, the cost of those assets is not just the upfront capital cost of purchasing or constructing that asset, but the entire cost of that asset. So maintaining it, rehabilitating, renewing, and even disposal cost. So when you think of landfill assets, for example, there are retirement obligations, there are disposal costs involved. So we're looking at the entirety of that. When we're thinking about our assets in terms of performance, a big indicator of performance is condition, so the condition of those assets. But also capacity, if you think of your water bikes, for example, if they're undersized, then that's a capacity issue, which is a performance issue that affects your service as well. Even something like functionality, so an asset that is no longer meeting your demands is obsolete, that is an indicator of performance that we typically add as well. And then finally, risk, as it is related to the asset. So how critical is that asset to your operations? If it were to fail, what are the consequences involved? Is it economic consequence, is it operational? So those are all elements that we took and looked at during this project with staff to really solidify what it is that your assets need to your services. So jumping first into that cost level, looking at your entire portfolio of assets, you've got about one point one billion dollars' worth of assets in terms of replacement cost. With the majority of that going towards your road and your water. Those are both critical assets, transportation, clean drinking water, critical services that we're providing. In terms of what it means to the public, it's about a hundred and fifty-seven thousand per household. The only reason I have that in there is just to say that it is a huge investment that we're making and that our taxpayers and our residents share when we're purchasing, when we're retaining these assets. So one point one billion, that is the number, but can we trust it? What is the source of that information? So we always want to ask ourselves, where is that information coming from? So that's really what that table and the rate comes into play. So that one point one billion dollar value, portfolio value, about ninety-five percent of those numbers are coming from user-defined or unit costing, meaning their cost from your latest project prices, tender prices, latest insurance appraisals, latest assessments or inspections. So they're very accurate, they're reliable. Only five percent of your assets were valued using construction agencies, so enslaving historical costs. And as we know, inflation in today's age is not accurate at all. So we take trust that that one point one billion dollar value is reliable, is accurate. Looking at the performance elements, so as I said, condition is a big piece of performance. And if you look at that graph on the left, you've got the majority of your assets are in that yellow to green bucket, really. So a lot of them are in the fair to very good. And about eighty-seven percent of your assets are actually in that fair or better condition, which is excellent, that's an excellent stat, that's much higher than we typically see for municipalities of your range, of your population size. But again, where does that condition information come from? Can we trust it? So that table on the right is showing us where that information is coming from. So for your road network, for example, eighty percent of those assets were assessed using your twenty twenty road need study. So that's an external assessment that we can assume is very reliable. If you look at your bridges and your culverts, ninety-seven of them were assessed through the twenty twenty OSIS or bridge inspection. Twenty-four percent of your wastewater network was assessed through CCTD inspections and staff assessments. So that's all reliable information because it's coming out of external assessments or it's coming from your staff. But on the other side, if you look at the rest of the assets, they're using age as their determinant, so age-based condition. And as we know, age is not always the best indicator of performance. You might have assets that are, you know, past their service life, but they're still functioning as needed. And vice versa, you might have assets that are brand new, but they're already failing to be insured. So we want to take this slide with a grain of salt because the information is always going to get improved, refined, constantly refined as you collect more condition information, as you input that into your asset management database and utilize it. So taking that one point one billion dollar value, including any of the rehabilitation or scheduled events that staff have defined, have scheduled, and dividing that by the entire service life of your asset, we're left with about twenty-three or twenty-four million dollars in terms of annual requirements. So what this graph is going to show is over the next full life of your assets. And each asset category, as you can see, has a specific color to it. You can see how much we need to put into each asset to maintain our portfolio. So that twenty-four million dollars, when we're looking at this graph, we want to ask ourselves, are we ready, are we prepared for these peaks? If you can see in twenty forty, in twenty sixty, do we have enough in reserves to be able to meet the demands of these rehabilitation and replacement? And a simple answer is going to be no. And that's true for every, almost every country or municipality, and every municipality within Canada. Okay, you've got my word, everybody. We are in the deficit, right? So taking that twenty-three or twenty-four million dollars of annual requirement, subtracting the funding that is available. And this funding available, I want to note, is it's capital funding that is consistent, that is sustainable, that is from sustainable sources of revenue. So we're thinking of our gas tax, our OSIS. We're not factoring in one-time grants or transfers. Those will remain part of your, you know, a critical part of your revenue source, but they are not consistent and they're not sustainable, so we can't account for them in this plan. So subtracting those numbers, we're left with a fourteen million dollars' worth of deficit potentially. Or in other words, you're about, you're funding forty-two percent of your long-term requirements, which is on average what we see for Canadian municipalities. What this, what this means as well is that these assets are, at this point, they're maintained to a specific level of service, but that doesn't necessarily mean that's what you want to maintain the path. So they're not constant or static numbers, they're very much dynamic based on what target level of service you will choose to maintain, how it is that staff prioritize assets, projects. So looking at the financial strategy we've recommended in terms of bridging that deficit, that fourteen million deficit, we've recommended about two point five percent tax change for your tax-funded assets over the next fifteen years, two point six percent over ten years for the water, rate-funded assets, one point six percent for your wastewater asset over the next ten years, and then for your solid waste assets, about point three percent for the next year. So a few things to keep in mind. One, this only accounts for capital expenditures. So there's no operating, there's no growth or expansion included in this strategy or this scenario. Two, we're assuming that no new debt is being taken on to pay for existing infrastructure. So this is purely based on what you currently have. And again, these numbers are not static, they're based on how it is that you want to start managing these assets and the level of service that you want to track. And I want to also add that these recommendations, you're not bound to them. All they're showing you is this is how much you would need if you wanted to bridge that deficit. So it's meant to be used as a guiding, supporting document to your budget deliberation, to your capital planning, but you're not bound to them.
So May, I just want to cut in really quick, so just for the media and for members of the public. So Public Sector Digest, does this work across the country with many municipalities around asset management? Your recommendation is that we would increase taxes two point five percent every year just to take care of the capital infrastructure we currently have?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Of course. And just wrapping up here with the last slide in terms of key takeaways from this project, as you saw, everything depends on the quality of the data that we're putting into it. So as staff continue to operationalize asset management, as they continue to collect more condition information, replacement cost information, this information will be much, much more accurate and you can utilize it for your capital planning. Then the fact that you have an asset management coordinator now that can dedicate the majority of their time to asset management is fantastic.
That's a sneak preview, May. I was going to leave that good news for later in the meeting, but thanks for getting that out there. So sorry, I just, I really want to hammer home on this. I just want to be clear, so May, when you say two point five percent, you're talking about two point five percent every year. So it's not a one-time injection of two point five percent, it would be two point five percent for the next fifteen years. I just, okay, so I just want to make sure that's really clear, just so that that's out there in the universe for people to chew on. Because we're going to have some conversations today about budget, we're going to have some conversations today about infrastructure. I just, you know, I just really want to hammer that point home for the media and for the public that are listening here today.
Correct, and that's based on the information that we have. So if you go back to the condition, the assets that are missing those assessed condition, that could also skew that recommendation at the end. So it's all about ensuring that the input, the information that's going into it is as accurate as possible so that we can trust the information coming out of it as well. And then just finally, looking at developing perhaps a data governance framework, a strategy where you know when you're collecting the data, how often, who's collecting it, so that there's constant, you know, reliable and accurate information being spent into your asset management program and so that the outputs, again, can be reliable. And then for the twenty twenty-five requirement, because that's really the next deadline in terms of the ORE that you have to meet, looking at what kinds of target levels of services you want to potentially need. And you've got a couple of years now to be able to track, on average, what level of service you are hitting. And then having that intelligent conversation with the public, having a public engagement opportunity so you can get some feedback in terms of what your key stakeholders want to see as well. And that's really about it for the presentation. I welcome any questions.
Questions or comments, Councilor? Councilor Smith?
Yes, thank you very much for the information. I just want to follow up on a point that Kyle made, because it's very important that people know that this is two point five percent over and above everything else that we've been spending on. So when you see the tax increase this year at two point nine three or wherever we're at, when we discuss the budget today, that's another two point five percent on top of that if we are to meet our level of separate service commitments and our asset management plan. I was around for the last reiteration of the asset management plan. The recommendation in there regarding the deficit and what we would need to spend every year was two point two percent, if I remember correctly. We managed, and I've been around for three terms now, to, one year in one budget is put away a half a percent. That's the only, that was the only measure we took to achieve the goal of the recommendation of the asset management plan. And because we're always so committed to keeping our tax rates down, we only managed a half percent over, I don't know, ten years or whatever. That's really important to recognize, and it's important for the community to recognize that in order to have a level of service with the assets that we need, we need to invest. And I think that for future councils that come along, you're going to have to start looking for a dedicated source of funding. I think of the proposed casino that's coming to Canora, and we will get a source of revenue from that. I think you need to be looking at those kinds of sources of revenue and dedicate them strictly to something like the asset management plan. So this is really good information. I got excited reading through it. I thought there was a lot of good information in it. It talked about risk, climate change was a big one. I don't know if I saw that in the last asset management plan. And when I look at the budgets, and we'll talk about that later today, we're in, we have some challenges ahead of us with the climate change. We talk about staffing. We're going to be approving a new organizational staffing chart to meet some of these challenges. And as Kyle said, we have an asset management coordinator. That's a really good step forward in doing that. There's other positions when it comes to managing our infrastructure that's going to be really important. So yeah, as Kyle said, this is a really, really important information for taxpayers as we move forward because it's a huge commitment going forward. Thank you.
Councilor McMillan?
Thank you. Just a brief comment to add on to Councilor Smith. I very much appreciated seeing a section in there on climate change, and as she mentioned, it wasn't there last time. But I just want to acknowledge the efforts of our staff in putting together a sustainability action plan, working with the community to ensure that's there. And my sense is that as asset management's progressed, it's going to take a significant higher profile, particularly with the weather incidents we're facing. So I see that very much as a positive. Thank you.
Chairman?
I just wanted to remind the Council that when we do pass the capital budget, if you recall on the summary page where we show, are we above or below last year's requirement, we throw in a one percent increase for capital only. Do you remember that? That always gets pushed back, so that's what we're trying to do with that one percent. It's obviously not enough, but that's what we're trying to do, so maybe next year we'll be ignoring that. I also would like to thank May for all of her work. She's just an excellent consultant to have and so helpful and so informative and does a good job. Thank you.
Any other comments, Councilor? Great report. Thank you very much, May.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to our second deputation, Suzie Mello, Brooks McIlroy, Pocket Park presentation. The floor is yours.
Good morning. Thank you, Mary. I'll go and finish sharing my screen. Can you see that okay?
Yes.
Okay. Hello. So this will be quick. I just wanted to speak to the part of what's happening at Fushin and Shipman. I know that there has been knowledge of the cold washing that's happening on this same site. And so I just wanted to bring knowledge to Council or the people of Canora of what's happening on the remainder of the site. So we've been working with Megan Tahucci and Adam Smith at the City of Canora on this project. And so this will just be a brief update of where we are at. The design team that's working on this, you can see just at the bottom of this page. So I just want to introduce them because some of them are on this call too, but I will be the one that's speaking. So we have myself and Ryan Riley with Brooks McIlroy, Sean Bailey and Laurie Fadness with Grounded Architecture, who are based in Canora, and Eduardo Keen with SPMV. Sean and Eduardo have worked on this site with their students at the University of Manitoba, so you might be familiar with them as well. So the site location, a lot of people are familiar with it, but I will just introduce it quickly. So the address itself is fifteen Shipman, just on the corner of First Street and Shipman. You can see the red rectangle there, so it's a lot closest to First Avenue and a lot in between Northern Townsend Systems. And the lot for this site is only five Northern Townsend Systems. The Northern Townsend System is this fat right rectangle right there. So to date, what we've done, we've done a lot of site commissions, but we did have an event on site on April twentieth, this is the portal of the day. As you can see, it was a snowstorm. So we had to reschedule because there was a previous snowstorm that closed all the highways, but we were lucky enough to make it in this time. So to be have some fishing hats that were perfectly for it. We have a community come out, thanking to a Council that came out for this as well. We had Kalvinsky, Johnny Breck, and Becky in the Sunset Country Family Health Team, who set up there as well. And so we spent probably, I think it's eleven till just after two, speaking to the community. So whoever came out, we had some people who was blessed by Calvin too, and we had ceremony on site. So just to start a new beginning for this site, which actually the snow, Calvin described as a new life for the site, which was wonderful. We got a lot of information, so we had a site plan that was set up in one of the ice machine hats. And the community came in, whoever wanted to, and wrote all of the site, the idea that anything was possible. And so here's just a quick summary and an image of the plan that was there on that day. Just to summarize it quickly, the washroom was something that was, we spoke a lot about, showers. But mostly it was about green gardens, green space, trees, tomatoes, vegetables, the smells and scents of a space. But also an area for events such as dancing, music, a stage, just an area for sitting and gathering. And another point that we brought up a lot was shelter, an area to have coverage in rain or snow or wind. So we took this, and because there was a lot of great ideas, and we also looked at, I was looking through the resume. I was looking through the present, so I bought all the doc that was done here, and one of the questions that really stood out to us, which was what are three keywords that you would use to describe what the city of Canora should look like over the next 20 years? And so it was interesting to see that there was a lot of keywords that were repeated throughout, and so I just have highlighted them in this gray box here in the middle. And so those words were inclusive, green, well-organized, vibrant, complete, and that was a lot of the same words that we used at our feast event on April 20th. So now we're at a point where we've taken all of this information and are applying it to the site. So this is the site here. This is First Street here and Shipman here, and you can see at the bottom it's the Northern Sound and Systems. And so this here is the lot that we are looking at, that is being called Canora Pocket Park, but really it's just a small area for a park, which is why I guess they're calling it a pocket park. So now we're applying what we've learned from the feast engagement and also looking at existing site conditions to ensure that everything is placed in an area that will work with existing topography and drainage. So in the orange on the left side, you can see washroom. In terms of the existing utilities, that is the area which would make sense for this public washroom that is being coordinated by the city of Canora. And so our team is working to place that and locate it so that on site it will work with the park that we are going to be providing. So this presentation now, our next step is going to be the importance of this site we found from our feast engagement, like that this is a space for everyone. And so now we want to look at conversations with local organizations and develop partnerships to create a space that will work for existing programs and events, and things that are currently happening that require a space for it. So we've started to list potential partnerships and ideas for this, and so you can see them in the blue here, and I'll just go through slowly, just on firstly what we're leaving for the site, translating the feast engagement into a program for the site, which, as I mentioned, is washrooms, an area for shelter, gathering, play, and seating, and a large conversation with a green space. So it could be community gardens, various plantings, trees for shade. So the trees could work with that shelter element as well. In terms of partnerships, so potential partnerships, because in this gathering area, it could be outdoor markets. Youth programming was a big thing that came up in our conversations, was the area for kids to play and for youth to hang out. This could be a space for indigenous ceremonies that perform, this area of music, possibly there could be a collaboration with Northern Sounds. And then public art, KACL, that's one organization we want to speak to, because I think there's a lot of overlaps with each of these areas that could benefit the design. And now moving into the green space, so KACL, Harvest of Canora, those are conversations we want to develop too, to understand what sort of maybe community gardens or plantings or collaborations could happen that could define this green space as well. And then the area for the public washroom, I should mention, so Megan might have more information about this, but it is going to have two units, and so one unit will function as a washroom, a self-cleaning washroom, and the other one will be left as a flexible unit, meaning it won't be a washroom, but rather it'll be used for community programming. And that hasn't been taught yet in terms of who will occupy that space, and that I think is a benefit of these conversations you can have, that possibly it changes every month in terms of who can occupy that space and sort of activate the outdoor space that is around it. So I really want to create social relationships with the community and provide a space for everyone through the design that we create for this space. So this is something that I will look to counsel too, if the public reaches out to you in terms of interest in this. We are there to have those conversations as well. So if you have other recommendations or potential permissions, I would be great to. So just in terms of next steps, so over the next few weeks, we are going to be having conversations with Megan and Adam, who have nice and given us the contact information for Harvest of Canora and all of these organizations that I've listed here on this previous screen. So we will be having those conversations and then compiling all of that information and creating a concept for the site. So that will be happening in the next few weeks, and we will then start developing our plans. The long-term plan is to tender this in June, early July, and so that we can have a construction start this year and August and September, to end also coordinating with the public washroom that the city of Canora is coordinating for the same site. So it's going to be a collaboration to ensure that everything works seamlessly between those two projects. That's my quick overview of this project, so I can open up to Mary Ann and counsel if you have any questions or recommendations or comments.
Any comments or questions, counsel? Done here. Thank you, Suzie. That's a great presentation. We look forward to the completion of your project.
Thank you very much.
All right, next up, Lassie Halonen, would like to talk about land purchase file. Lassie, it's all yours. You're on mute, Lassie. You're muted.
All right.
There we go. Thank you.
Unfortunately, the technology escaped again, a little long in the tooth, so anyway, I'm going to try to make this brief, and I don't have any presentation as such, a digital presentation for you. Why I'm here is because of the complete application of purchase of property file number L07-22-01, and I believe that it's the White and Yancey's file. This is in preparation for their development for flex units, still behind my place. But this particular, what I am talking, speaking to is particular issue is young along Aberdeen and Gray Street. My comments will be focused on Gray Street portion only, that is because I own lots 178, 179, extending from Delphine westward, Milwaukee 988 to Aberdeen along Gray Street. But that's kind of difficult without any reference, and all I can do is show you a reference line, a little bit of the old Hudson Bay file. But before I get into the issues of, issues and effects of the Yancey's white proposal, I think to comment on the notice that was posted. Why the use of historical street names, for example, Aberdeen and Gray Street? How about Blitstone, Warren, Delphine, Monk, Arthur? It's somewhat confusing. Just so you know, Aberdeen is supposed to have a north, Gray is Sixth Street north, Warren is Seventh Street north, Delphine is 13th Avenue north. And there's the, there's the actual area photos or satellite photos, well, they were so bad, it's impossible to tell where the, in the notice where the property question was, and it was by sheer accident that I stumbled on it. But just to give you, if you guys have maybe are viewing this, here's the ad right here, and you can't see anything basically on it. So unless you did what I did, and walked, had hooked online and downloaded the file, using a known, which was happening, so, and you would have made it completely. I guess there was supposed to be a letter to advise me of the application of purchase, but it didn't get out to me till after my meeting with the city planner and Kevin Summer and Melissa Shaw on the 22nd. This was, this was posted on the 14th, I'm in the paper, and I didn't get a letter that something was happening till after my meeting with Kevin Summer and Melissa Shaw. So I don't know, something happened. Is it kind of a post or what? Anyway, the issue at hand is the application for purchase of any property file number, again, L07-2201. If you're going to go ahead with this, Sam, with this applicant, you should consider this. When I first moved into this neighborhood and I purchased this property, this house belonged to where I am at, there was a back lot of the 178, 179, specifically 179. This house was, belonged to Mr. Hummern, and it was built by Lester Nelson, and it faced Sixth Street, not 13th Avenue, although my address was 13th Avenue. So the historic access, and still is, and that's what I would call prescribed access through CPR property, which has and still is used by everybody, from the city, delivery, emergency delivery, and emergency vehicles, and all those previous tenants and myself. This actually was established well before I purchased my house in 1980. It'd be undeveloped, a road access in front of the south side, lots 180 to 186, that is the proposed new development, inclusive is shown, sold at, shown in the proposal, all of the landlord. This is my house, which is built in 1958 by Lester Nelson, was situated on the back lot at the 179. And if anybody's aware of this, this area, it rises up quite high, quite quickly. So anyway, the access from the front, we'd have to cross lot 178, and it would be quite difficult. Furthermore, the post plan shows the whole, their whole development on erroneously, erroneously displayed property, seriously affecting my property as laid out on my placement survey. And my placement survey just states through 1980, which was used by the bank when I got my mortgage, which was used by, I had it in the city, chose, so basically the Mohammed House, well within my block lines except for one corner, but it has all the measurements in there. And since John Burke, who was the previous owner of that property, had, I think he's sort of a rugged Germanic, with, I can't remember the total name, who owned it. But anyway, he had a survey, and placement stakes out there, and they were placed wrong, in my opinion, and according to my, my survey, which was the original survey of this area, and was pumped into this Hudson Bay plan, and according to this plan. So, and what made it even worse was, there was a former state, square iron bar, SID or they call it, on the corner of my lot, northwest corner, which they didn't acknowledge, and they didn't look for it, and I went and rented a metal detector and found it, so there was something going on here, so some of the streets need corrected before, before I think the sale goes through. And when I look at all these aerial photos in this site plan, that is kind of of the neighborhood or the lots, as laid out, they're willy-willy, they don't, they're not to scale, they don't fit properly, they're cutting it through people, people's houses, so on and so forth, and I find it really deceiving somehow. So I think there needs to be some thought of these things before quickly jumping into it, and this is just, just my observation. I'm not against development by any means. I've given it in construction and building business for a long, long time, worked for various companies, and that is what they do. So, and don't get me wrong, I'm not against anything, it's just that I'm, I'm just cautioning that this could have sent some of the present. Let's see. So anyway, this is, going back to the CPR encroachment, and I know that's not necessarily a city issue, but all through the years, people have used that to access the back, even as did the city, when they continued to build the road there, dumping whatever waste and scrapings and sand, winter sand removal or whatever, the dusty stuff, the back, so there was a section of that back there. So that was used. When I first moved out here, the garbage collection was in the back over here, and it also, also the snow, snowplows used to go up there. And now, unfortunately, in the last 10 years, that's really, has been very sporadic, I think I've got these tappets at the front, not at the back anymore. I can understand that. But I've been following my APB most of that road, and my neighbor, I've been following most of the street, and most occasions have the snowfall, and by the time the city gets here, people have to get out, go to their jobs or whatever, and if we don't do it, the access or the movement on the street is almost impossible.
Lassie, 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 I'd ask you if you could just concentrate on the issue at hand. We understand some of the, some of those other issues.
I understand that. Okay. As far as the issues, issues at hand, there are the issues that they can back the proposal that is going to link to service, like I said, my survey documented by Stacy Kirkup Limited Surveyor, something here's going to run right, and their file number K80-12, dated March 20th, 1980 Surveyor note, was Russell Day Woods on their land surveyor, surveyor, has been identified, the lots 178, 179, and the size and placement of those lot lines and structures within on March 22nd of 1980. And a steel iron bar anchored in the northeast, anchored in the northeast corner. Anyway, there, like I said, there was a conflict on that, I'll move on, and all I'm saying is, now, even if I purchase or make an application of purchase, the encroachment in the property in front, the street allowance in front of my place, it's still not allowed me access to the property from the, from the west side, which has been historically there, it was fenced off, there was access there when I moved there, and all of a sudden it's no longer there. So that's where the problem lies, so. I understand that the Yancey's white development needs that to make their parking and road access, but then the number units there, so perhaps there's going to be adjustment. I just look at the aerial plan, shows all that, that on my, coming to my property, some of that curve across, so, and I, which, which kind of will affect me, and so that survey before granting the sale, maybe that should be corrected, and otherwise, I think, I think let's, let's work together and get this thing done, you know?
Great. Thanks, Lassie. Well, thank you for your presentation.
All right.
Moving on to the next deputation, Allison Pele, Megan Dicucci. Glad you're here, summer initiatives.
Thank you so much for having us here. We're here today, Megan and myself, to talk to you about the ladder of year summer initiatives that we have planned out for businesses. I'm sure she can hear me. We did a summer sneak peek on April 28th to businesses, and I want to just say that it was super well received. We had about... We had about, about twenty-five people on the call, uh, and today we plan to follow up that call with a, an overview that's going to go out to businesses, and then we'll be hand-delivering some as well, uh, soon, too. Okay, so this is going off the slogan that we've used for the last two summers, and we've been, you know, going through COVID, and now we're, you know, looking at the other end of the tunnel. Uh, so we're really excited to welcome back our residents, seasonal residents, neighboring communities, and visitors to our local businesses and to the city. Um, this is the signage that's in the roundabout, and we're just really happy to be seeing this and spreading this good message to everybody. Um, some of the advertising that we have lined up for this program, um, so we're in the area news, the Stuff Magazine, we'll be updating all the big bellies around downtown, we'll be doing blitzboards, uh, new this year is targeted social media ads, um, so we'll be putting some spend towards that, and they'll be targeted to people who are visiting Kenora, uh, so when they pull into town and they're looking for something to do, it will draw attention to events or, or various things that are happening in the community that they can partake in. We'll also be pushing out information through the Ken and Nora social media pages, as well as through all the Kenora Business Partner pages as well. Uh, we're excited too to bring back some, some fan favorites of promotional items. So last year, Mayor and Council were, uh, able to hand out bags at the farmers' markets, which people were thrilled for, uh, so we're bringing those back, as well as we have drink koozies to hand out, too. Uh, people were just so excited with that messaging, uh, when they saw the bags, and then it's, of course, says Kenora, Ontario on them as well. Uh, we're also looking forward to doing a ribbon cutting again. Uh, you'll remember, we did one in twenty twenty-two, and, or sorry, twenty twenty, uh, closed the street briefly, um, and kind of did something splashy, which had some great photos and social media attention that was brought to it. So looking forward to welcoming Mayor and Council on May nineteenth at twelve thirty to, to do that again this year, too. Uh, we'll also be working with the testimonials that we had again as well. So we did these last year, we asked businesses to submit a testimonial with a Glad You're Here message. Uh, we're pushing that out again this year, we already have some, um, some people who've submitted, and we're using those on some of the print ads, so the one, the poster that you saw at the start, that's going to be going in the Stuff Magazine, uh, and we're going to be pushing these out through social media, through the city's channel, through Development Kenora, through Ken and Nora, uh, as well as the Northwest Business Center. Um, businesses seem to really like this, there's lots of interaction from it, um, so we'll continue with these as well. Um, so this next item, Harbor Friends, um, you can see here we have the brand, uh, and this is the Downtown Ambassador Program. Uh, this is a new program that's been developed, uh, in response from recent community surveys to focus, and the focus is on the Kenora Harbor Front and Downtown area. Example programs like this exist in other communities such as Kelowna, Winnipeg, and Calgary. Um, essentially, these are people that will be on the street seven days a week, working a one to, one to nine P.M. shift, and the purpose, uh, is for the Harbor Friend to be visible, friendly, and knowledgeable of resources and attractions and things to do downtown. Uh, this is providing a presence, um, and will provide visitors with information and connect, and connect with businesses to assist with the needs, uh, and referral to support services as well. Uh, we're currently recruiting for these positions, and Megan and I, uh, will be leading the team of the Harbor Friends, and we're absolutely thrilled about it, and I'm going to turn it over to Megan now, for some more comments.
Yeah, so, um, when Alison and I were, I guess, sharing the Harbor Friends program with the businesses a couple weeks ago, we really pitched it as being a concierge service for businesses. So we want, um, these Harbor Friends to be that connection between the city and the business community, uh, they'll be stopping in daily to visit with folks, um, and we're really looking, um, for them to be that friendly face on the street to help visitors as well. So, as Alison said, we're both very much looking forward to leading this team, and are currently recruiting for these positions, so.
Yeah, and it was a very well-received program from the businesses. Uh, we had several follow-up emails, uh, people looking for the job link, uh, lots of great questions around this, so there's a lot of excitement among the businesses about this, uh, announcement that we made to them.
So we're also very excited to be continuing the good work of the Kenora and District Chamber of Commerce this year, and the city will be leading the open-air street markets on Main Street again this summer, so we have two proposed dates, July sixteenth and August thirteenth, and those events will take place from ten A.M. to three P.M. on Main Street between First and Second Street. Um, you know, this is a great opportunity to have local and regional vendors come downtown. Last year, they had musicians, uh, we were thrilled to have council participate and do some of those giveaways on the street. Um, so this is a free public event and a great way to bring people into the downtown. Um, the applications for businesses are now posted, and we will be circulating those applications downtown in person, so, uh, just very excited to continue this event this year and have two of these markets this summer. The next piece of the program that we'll be promoting again this year is the pop-up patio program. So this was something that we really promoted in response to COVID nineteen in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, and the City of Kenora does have a policy in place that supports the development of temporary patios on municipal properties. So, these are in areas such as on municipal sidewalks or in municipal parking spaces. And so, you may recall, last year, we had some great pop-up patios, uh, we had Hojo develop the bump out at the corner of Main and First, and we also have a photo here on the slide of the, the pop-up patio that the Plaza developed in the parking spaces in front of their restaurants. So, um, you know, this is just a reminder to businesses, there are no application fees to participate in this program, and we're really just encouraging anyone to reach out if they have any questions, they can get ahold of us at Development Services. So we put this slide up here because we're really excited. Of course, uh, council adopted the new tourism brand, uh, just in April. Uh, this was a project that started in July of twenty twenty-one and included, you know, the development of a new tourism destination brand alongside a one-year marketing strategy and a new visitor-focused website. Um, so we're very excited that the brand has been accepted by council because it allows us to do really fun things like this, that you'll see on the next slide. And, uh, we're very much looking forward to incorporating this new brand into the streetscaping program this year. So, uh, the city, in partnership with the Harbor Town Biz, was successful in receiving some funding from the province of Ontario. That will see the development of new streetscaping elements in the Harbor Town Center, so, uh, these are examples of the new brand, um, you know, being used, uh, on new street pole banners. So, um, we'll be looking to install just over a hundred banners in the Harbor Town Center, so you'll see, um, you know, a complete replacement of the Eat Shop Explorer Buffalo Plaid Ones Downtown, and you'll also see banners in places where we currently don't have any. So we're very excited, uh, to use the brand in these elements. We will also be looking at using this brand in the development of street pole wraps, so this is a new, I guess, beautification initiative that we're also doing in the downtown, uh, this summer. Uh, really hoping to get these out, uh, prior to the beginning of June. Um, we were really looking to have everything in place before May-long weekend, um, but we might need an extra week in there as far as timing, but, um, you know, certainly very excited to move forward with this project. And then, uh, we did confirm with the Biz that they will also be delivering the Flower Basket program again this year, so that will just be additional beautification in the Harbor Town Center for the summer. And that is the overview of the program and a few of the really exciting initiatives that we have outlined for this summer, so I don't know if anyone on council has any questions.
Counselor Ben Willoughby.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, there's different pictures of the MS Kenora and stuff in there. Have you had conversations with them? Do they plan on running this summer after being down for two years?
I'm going to look to Stace. I do believe they are planning on operating this summer.
That's what we've heard.
Good, thanks.
Any other comments, questions, counsel? Thanks, Megan. Thanks, Alison.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, we'll move to, uh, item one point one, uh, March twenty twenty-two financial statements, and Charlotte, this is to you.
Yes, nothing, um, out of the ordinary, unusual in the first quarter. Um, you have to remember that we budget on an annual basis, and that when we compare budget to actual on monthly basis, it's just like, okay, the total budget divided by twelve. Um, there is some, we can tweak our budget, we can go further and, and budget seasonally, and that's to come. Um, never had time getting a budget, so, anyway, but, um, so, when we look at the first quarter, all of the expenditures are below the seventy-five percent that typically would be spent. Now, that's assuming, um, stable expenditure and stable income for the first quarter, as we know that that's not always the case, but we are in a good place with our overall spending. Uh, our revenues are, are under, but again, we have a lot of seasonal revenues, and we've been, we've been closed early this year in our recreational facilities, so that's going to be reflected. The biggest item that is unusual is, of course, the winter control. As you all recall, um, this is the worst season in how many years?
Sixty-three, I'm told.
Okay, well, six, five in here. Um, and, uh, the same with the rain, so we're, we're being, we have, we have a, an unusual year, but we also have a winter control reserve dedicated to years like this year. So, not concerned about any, uh, over-budgeting in that area. Um, other items, the pool had some routine repairs done, so we're going to have a higher expense earlier in the year, nothing to be concerned about. The library museum, we, uh, once the budget is passed, we take the annual, divide by twelve, and show that as an annual contribution to the library museum. Right now, it's showing zero. Overall, swimming water is within budget for expenses, and in terms of revenue, we are right around that seventy-five percent mark, solid waste, uh, under budget in the expenditures, and, uh, user fees are, will be catching up a bit, but again, we tend to realize a, a higher, uh, return on revenue in the summer months for solid waste.
Questions, comments? Counselor for you.
Uh, thanks, uh, to Charlotte, I, I was just looking at the, uh, under Environmental Services, so, uh, sanitary and water work, and just, I think for curiosity more than anything, when I look at twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two, and I look at variances, and I look at the amount of actual revenue collected, um, for user fees, uh, you know, it's one point seven, and it's two point seven in twenty twenty-two, and I understand when our revenue projections have gone up, but is that a, just a recording thing? Like, why there's such a difference?
We haven't accrued and reversed the year-end.
Oh, okay. On twenty twenty-two, yeah, okay, thank you.
Counselor Smith?
Yeah, Charlotte, going back to, um, the, um, winter maintenance budget and the overage in it, so I know that Jeff reported in his report that, uh, tendered equipment was two-hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand. So, um, does your figures in the, um, budget line include staff overtime, um, accumulated overtime and that?
It would, and we do record, uh, staff do record their timesheets in winter control, so, uh, it would. Uh, only up until our last payday, which was, not last Friday, but Friday before.
So that number could rise a bit.
Sorry, this is end of March, so.
Yeah, so that number could rise a bit?
It could.
Um, so I didn't look at the winter maintenance reserve, so what does this do to our winter maintenance reserve? Is there any money left after this year and after those unusual expenses?
We have a million dollars from that reserve.
Nicely done. Thanks, Charlotte.
So we will, um, we, we do anticipate having money left in there, and we also, uh, SLT is going through a process to review all of our reserves, so, similar to what we did, sort of, right at the tail end of the last council, we'll sort of do a reset on everything, and we'll make sure that those reserves are, you know, particularly something like the winter control reserve, is adequately funded, you know, should we, hopefully not end up with a one in sixty-one or sixty-two year type of precipitation fall again, but certainly to make sure we're ready for any inordinate overtime, you know, contracted services, stuff like that.
And this has been an accumulation over a number of years, like we were contributing two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, so, you know, it started a few years ago, I think we dipped into it once for maybe fifty thousand in those years, uh, so we haven't really dipped in, so we're, we've got a nice balance in there to tide us. You know, we may need to use some in twenty twenty-one as well, right? But I don't anticipate we'll be using a million.
So this is a really good example of how, um, having healthy reserves benefits the taxpayers, and this is a really good example because I think that, um, with winter maintenance, we may, this may be more of a norm going forward with climate change, I expect it will be. So, yeah, it's actually a good, um, example of having healthy reserves and, um, for the taxpayers. Thanks, Charlotte.
Any other questions? And I'd like to say that that's, uh, this, Counselor Smith's point definitely underscores the need for healthy reserves. Sometimes people wonder, why do you keep so much in reserve? But it's for years like this, and potentially for, we have no idea what summer's going to bring us.
Great, and we do have a lot, and as Kyle mentioned, we want to make sure that the balances and the reserves are, are in the places that we need them and can be used most effectively, so we're going to sit down and have a, a, a good detail to look at it.
Thanks for that, Charlotte.
And everyone is very excited about it on us.
That's a good thing.
Hi.
Uh, item one point two, Ontario Regulation two eight four slash zero nine, twenty twenty-two Budget Matters, and this again is yours, Charlotte.
Okay, uh, what this report is, is telling you is that we budget in a different way than we prepare our financial statements, and this report brings to your attention how the statements, surplus on the statements will look different than the surplus in our budget. Specifically for capital assets, in two thousand nine, we were required to, uh, record the capital assets on our balance sheet, which means that we don't record them as expenses. When we budget, we record them as expenses and fund them accordingly. Um, so what this is telling us is that, rather than seeing, and I'm, I'm doing, this is the budget, actually, this is the tangible capital asset budget for twenty twenty-two, nineteen thousand, six sixty-four, one oh three, and just to bring to your attention, May told us we should be spending about twenty-three million, so we're, we're not that far away in twenty twenty-two. Um, so that, that number will not show as an expense in the twenty twenty-two financial statements, and I always tell you, you know that number on the statements that says capital assets? That doesn't mean a lot, because, you know, it's the value that we assigned to assets in two thousand and nine, some of them we estimated, it's also net of amortization, which again, we estimate the useful life of our assets, so that net book value doesn't mean a lot. Okay, so, this is the number that's going to go on the balance sheet, we budget for it as an expense. The next line is amortization, and everyone knows what amortization is. This is what you will see as an expense on the financial statements, not the actual capital cost. So we're looking at a surplus of eleven million that exists only because of the way we account for capital assets. So bringing that to your attention for twenty twenty-two surplus.
Any questions or comments, or do you have anything further, Charlotte? Thanks for the explanation. All right, moving on, uh, one point three, we've had a presentation, uh, Asset Management Plan Update.
Okay, I'm going to turn that over to Dave, he's all ready to talk to you about it.
Uh, thank you. So, I'm not going to spend a lot of time reading this report, the continuation of May's presentation, but, uh, the recommendation is that council hereby accept the updated asset management plan for the City of Kenora as prepared by public sector digest, and further that administration continue to improve data, underline the plan and strategies with which to manage the city's infrastructure. Um, as May already presented earlier today, uh, the city currently with this update to the asset management plan, we meet the Ontario Regulation five eighty-eight seventeen, um, and we meet those objectives until July first, twenty twenty-four, and then again, there are more requirements in July first, twenty twenty-five. And just of this update, as May already presented, is we were required to do a, include the non-core asset level of services, so those including like facilities, equipment, um, those types of assets. assets and due to the funding we had available through ACM, we were able to provide a full update so that we went through all the data from the original asset management plan that TFC did in 2018, including as David said, and we were able to do a full update. It required a lot of work and through city staff here, but that is de-processed of what you see in your document today and city staff continued to capture data and serve supplement and improve management plan. Budget wise, the funding was through the federal Canadian municipalities, the Federation of Canadian municipalities and as part of the program for this update, we will be applying for future funding, its status is unknown currently though. Any questions?
Counselor Poirier.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. So either to David or Charlotte, you can you can decide who will answer this. So adapting the plan and then there was a lot of very valuable information that she provided today, May, what could we expect at council on say an annual basis, like a report card on, you know, where you know, where we can use that information as a tool when we're discussing budget and so on and so forth? And I go back to the slides where it scores, like the road, all the different, all the different pieces of infrastructure, you know, good or very good, good, fair, I think there was five categories altogether and doing a comparison, like after we do spend, you know, twenty million or twenty-three million dollars in capital, you know, what can we expect as to say that, you know, some of the decisions we made at this table and providing funding for staff to go out and do these things, like are we going to, can a subsequent council expect this, to receive this kind of, because that's good, that's good, that's good data points, that's good information to have. And the other one is when we're, again, we're getting back into another report where we're talking about, now, I guess in a perfect world, anticipated increases in tax levies and then we already know on the water side and wastewater about what we're looking for the next several years. Like what, I'm just wondering out of all this, and it's a very good tool, I'm not disputing that, but what information or high level information we receive, expect to receive at council to, because I know it's a massive report, a massive plan, to help us, you know, make good decisions, policy decisions at the table?
I can answer the first one. So the all the information that was provided, we have record of in a program called Citywide. So it would just be senior leadership to have to put the directive out of what they would like tracked and presented to future council and then basically generating the reports. So all the information that's provided here, we have in our system and furthermore, they're updated annually for when we, let's say, as an example, last year when Highway seventeen was resurfaced, that asset was updated and its life cycle was renewed. So we do have that information, it's just getting the connection between staff and council with the issue of Kenora.
For sure, and council could could expect reports that would give you valuable information just like this and I'm going to say, with the new hire that we have, we do have the pivot person who will be putting that information together, so looking forward to that.
So the only thing that I would add is if if there's a particular, you know, way council would like to see the information sliced or a particular, you know, you know, particular information that they want, just let us know. It's going to be a little bit of a work in progress to get the new person up to speed and start to put those reporting templates in place, but it's certainly something that we take seriously and we want to make sure that we're providing council the best information.
For sure, and if you have any input with respect to that, that would be valuable because right now I have asked May to do some training with our new person because the information, as Dave said, is is information that is our system. Public Sector Digest is not only our consultant, but they also sold us the software, so it's their software, so it's it's doable and it will be done and sure.
Counselor Smith?
Yeah, so I think I'd be remiss in saying that, you know, the information report was really great and I'm, I hope that when an incoming, the new incoming council comes in, that is part of their orientation package, they really need to see that plan because it should be governing all the work going forward. I think we're remiss in in not recognizing the good work and the hard work of staff in trying to maintain infrastructure in a deficit position already and to try and meet levels of service that that the community expects. When I look at the, I was really surprised about the deficit in the equipment and I can just imagine those poor guys at the garage trying to patch stuff together over and over again and that investment is needing because sooner or later it becomes an ever-ending loop of, you know, you're just chasing, you know, bad money by doing that kind of stuff. So I think staff have to be recognized for trying to target badly needed areas of repair when we're already in a deficit situation, but I like the information in the report and it's and it's prudent to note that the the report, the assets were based on tax-funded assets and rate funded funded assets, which is utilities. And I think that to the credit of previous councils, we've come a long way on the water and wastewater budget and we've we've made tough decisions when it comes to ratepayers, recognizing that infrastructure badly needed to be updated and to be kept in a safe way and I know it's been a struggle, it's been a struggle for councillors around the table and it's been a struggler for ratepayers, but we are making progress and I think we have to stick to that because it's really important, you can't have failures in your water and wastewater systems. So I think it's really important for ratepayers, especially with that utility, because it's a misstruggle to recognize, you know what, stick to the hard work, have a plan and in the end, it's going to be better for future generations, so I think that information for sure needed to be pointed out. So thanks, Charlotte.
And just to build on that, you know, when when you're looking through the asset management, like asset management is a journey, you know, and we've we've been building and, you know, things are still fairly broad, so you know, we're road network, bridges and culverts, storm sewer, et cetera, et cetera. Some of the other decisions that administration is making, whether it's through, you know, infrastructure master plan and bringing in the asset management coordinator, we're going to, you know, continue to build and use this information to get even a little bit more granular so we can start to get to the point where we can come to council and we can say, hey, you know, here are the roads that are really, you know, most in need, how do we want to go about deciding which roads? That's that's sort of where we're trying to get to and, you know, so it's just, there's a little bit of patience involved to just keep building and building and building and stacking those blocks. I I think the encouraging thing to take from Public Sector Digest today is that she said that we were either, you know, well ahead of the curve in the expectations and the requirements from the province and that every municipality is going through this, every municipality has an infrastructure deficit. So, you know, I I think the city of Kenora, you know, should feel pretty good about where we're at and and I appreciate the kind words about the work that staff has done because they have done a tremendous job to get us to where we are and we know that the work is not over and we're going to, we're continuing to make decisions to try and plan better, get more information, make better decisions, bring better information to council to help you guys make decisions. So, you know, I appreciate council's patience as we continue to work through this because it is a lot of heavy lifting and it's a lot of work and I want to thank Dave and Marco and the engineering team and those other individuals on the asset management committee for their good, hard work. We've we've done this all on a bit of a shoestring and, you know, short-staffed and we're starting to get up to where we want to be from a complement perspective so that we can really, like I said, continue to take the ball and run with it in this area.
And not only will you see an annual report, you can see an annual report, but you're going to see the asset management plan or the benefits of the asset management plan when we do our capital budget because that will feed into our capital budget as, as Kyle said, you know, which which roads are in tough shape, these are the ones that we should prioritize, right? So it will have an impact on how we do the capital budget as well.
So I just want to follow up on Charlotte's comment and Kyle's comment about the budgeting this year and the asset management plan. I struggled a lot with the operating budget this year because of the additional staff complements and I still have some trepidation about some of them at this point, but I recognize in order to move forward and to meet the targets in the asset management plan, we've made some good decisions when it comes to staffing, particularly in operations and infrastructure, I already believe that portfolio has been too large and the addition of the general manager positions to help that is really going to make a difference in in the areas that staff, that taxpayers are concerned about. It's our roads, that's the stuff that I get the calls about, you know, the winter maintenance and I think for me, my confidence in in the new organizational chart is that, you know, first of all, you have to start out with the staff to do that, so I think it's important to mention that and I think moving forward, we're going to be able to start dealing with some of those deficits in a better way.
Any further questions, comments? All right, moving on. Item one point four, back to you again, Charlotte, Citizens Prosperity Trust.
So this report reflects the year end for the Citizens Prosperity Trust Fund investments. I've completed the year end, it hasn't been audited as of yet, but what's important to note is that the market value of our investments is higher than the book value, the market value being whatever the investments are worth at December thirty-first, the book value being what we actually paid for those investments. We write down book value to market when market is below book and I've given you that lesson before, you don't want to hear it again. We hold our investments in a variety of investments, as you can see, our gross investment income for 2021 is one point nine one million, okay, but I had to write down a couple of the funds down to market because market was below for two or three of them. That is, that write down of seven hundred and thirty-one thousand is unrealized. So yes, market was below cost at December first, 2021, I had to write that down, but it is not realized, but I had to make the journal entry. As I mentioned to you before, coming up in the next year or two, we will be adjusting to market in our financial statements, so that is changing, but for now, this is how I have to record it. So as you can see, we do have our one point one million, we can transfer over to the general fund. Overall, consolidated returns to to date in the one investments is six point two percent for the year since inception, so that was since July of 2020, the return is seven point seven percent. Consolidated year-to-date return on our RBC Dexia, now that was our old investment firm, we still have, as you can see, three and a half million sitting there, return is not so good, so probably for for at least 2020, 2021, it was a good move to move to a prudent investor. What I can tell you is I am liquidating that RBC Dexia, I was going to pull out the one point one million to move into the general fund out of that, so as you can see, in the short term, we will have liquidated, but right now, with the market being what it is, I hesitate to liquidate up one point one million right now, I'm going to pause on that and just wait for the market to come back up, I'm just going to watch the market on on those investments, but that's the intent for sure, that we're going to take out another one point one out of there, hopefully the investments come back later this year. There is no first quarter report for investments, I received the statements on Thursday afternoon, so not enough time to prepare the first quarter report for the deadlines, you'll see those in June.
So I just, I wanted to jump in really quick, so I, you know, and we've alluded a couple of times during the conversation here today just about, you know, oh, it's good to have money in reserves, you know, and and Charlotte recently did an episode of the podcast and I know I personally get a lot of questions about, why don't we just spend the prosperity fund? And so I just, I really want to take the time to just really hammer this home. If we spent down the prosperity fund, you know, we're generating one point one million dollars that goes into our operating budget every year, so without that, you know, if we exhausted the prosperity trust fund, understanding, you know, people have concerns about infrastructure and programming and servicing in the community, that's one point one million dollars that we then wouldn't have to put into the operating budget, which means one point one million dollars more pressure, more strain on the tax base and on the organization to figure out how to how to do its business. I also want to draw attention, I'm going to, every chance I get, I'm going to draw attention back to the fact that council and administration demonstrated, you know, some really good nimbleness last year and capitalized on getting lower interest rates through the bank, whereas we typically borrow from the prosperity fund at three percent. And so we've saved significant dollars for the organization in doing that, not only have we done that, we've also taken eleven million dollars that we had in our own debt, we've put that back into the prosperity fund so that Charlotte and her team can invest it, which means we're generating significantly more investment income. So I I really want to make sure that, you know, I like every chance I get to just sort of harp on that so that the media can hear, members of the public can hear and remind council as well, just how important, just how, you know, good of a position that we're in to be able to make good decisions, to be able to do future planning and how we continue to make good decisions to even get more runway out of the money that we do have. And so when we talk about, you know, the extra money, the investment income that Charlotte is bringing in that allows us to, you know, reduce strain on the operating budget, that is so significant, so beneficial for us and allow allows us to really make sure that we're putting effort and and dollars where we need to to deliver services for the public. So I just, I, like I said, I like to take the time to really just drive that point home because it's important, every chance we get just to think about it, to remind ourselves the good situation that we're in and the good decisions that we have made and the good returns that we're seeing on our investments.
Counselor Poirier?
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. So just a comment you made about the transfer of the one point one million into operating, I thought our cap was eight hundred and fifty thousand, or did we abandon that?
For the transfer to the?
Yeah, on an annual basis.
No, it was almost one point one. We did, we did bring it down in the years where investments were just not earning a great return and so we said, look, we can't go below what was initially invested in the prosperity trust fund, so and we knew that in the budget going forward, so I remember the transfer being nine fifty, you know, nine seventy-five.
Did we ever get down the, just sorry, just for clarification?
I don't recall it getting that low, but.
Yeah, I thought we were trying to bring it down to like forty thousand a year, I think we started.
We were, we were certainly, yeah, scaling it down and I can check to see what the budget was, I do remember nine fifty.
Maybe it was nine something and not thinking of another figure, but so we are, we did transfer like the net proceeds of one point one million into 2021 operating budget.
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yeah, and so I'm basically following up on Andrew's comments and Kyle's is that utility when the telephone was sold, the commitment was to make it a one point one, be able to make that so we could switch it over to use it in operating. So for many years, as Andrew said, we didn't make that target in the last few years when our investments were bad, so this is a good news story for taxpayers this year because if we didn't make that one point one million dollar in investment into the operating fund based on our our return on investment, is taxpayers would be paying more for the services in the operating budget and I know that we struggled before we got into the GIP, moving all our investments into that and our return is so good. So this is really a good news story this year that we're back to the one point one million dollars for taxpayers.
In addition to that, there's more good news, we also have investments in the, from the general fund in one investment, so we budgeted five hundred and fifty thousand in investment income for 2021, our actual investment income was closer to nine hundred thousand actual, so in addition to us getting the one point one back, we also have an additional three hundred, almost three hundred and fifty thousand in our general fund from our general fund investments.
Thank you.
Once again, the final piece of praise that I'm going to heap on Charlotte and council and administration for the foresight they have, you know, making the decision to go with prudent investor is, you know, at at the time, that was something that was still, you know, relatively new and required a little bit of foresight and a little bit of imagination to see the value that it could provide, but making that decision in the past two or three years has yielded significant returns, so cannot underscore enough just that I feel how strongly we've managed the city's finances, you know, particularly as it pertains to the prosperity trust fund, investment income, you know, I just, I think it's really important that the public understands the whole story so that, you know, they understand why we continue to make the choices we do and why we continue to. understand why we continue to make the choices we do and why we continue to use the prosperity fund in the way that we do for their benefit.
Any further questions?
And just so you know, the One Fund is, is doing a good job for us. We've been with them for years, as you recall. Just recently, I had the opportunity to switch our high-interest savings account over to an account that will earn us 3% just on our savings account until July. So I'm just going to do that, switch it over. We earn 3% instead of 1.1. So we do have these opportunities coming from one investment as well. So they're doing a good job for us.
Counselor McGinn.
Thank you. We were at the Noma Conference last week, and the One Fund had a booth set up. And when they heard we were the ones from Canora, they just were bubbly about Charlotte's working at, and they would like to see if we can talk her over retirement.
Very much so. We all appreciate the work you're doing, Charlotte. It's, you've really done a lot for the city. We really appreciate it.
You know, and it, it shows council as well. Council's been a big part of these decisions. We've made good decisions over the years, so it's, it's worthwhile to celebrate those.
Goes back to Mayor Winkler. I'll never forget. When I was the auditor at the city at the time, and he said, treat it like it's your own money.
Fair enough.
And he did.
And he did.
All right. Any more questions, comments? Nope. Okay, moving on to operating budget. Oh, pardon me, I'm jumping ahead. Procurement policy. And this comes to you, Heather.
I think Kyle's going to take it.
Kyle's going to take it?
Yeah, I, I could take this one. So, you know, I, I don't think we need to belabor the report. There's quite a bit of information in here. You know, this is a process that I've been through before and that I thought was very important. Again, when we talk about, you know, spending the city's money wisely, making good decisions around the purchasing that we're doing. We, we really looked, the, the purpose of this review was to create efficiencies, to create flexibility for leaders in the organization to be able to make good purchasing decisions, to make some updates to ensure that we were in line with recent changes in procurement law and with the free trade agreements, and, and just trying to eliminate some of the redundancies that we had in our process. So really, the most important thing for council is, council has become accustomed to approving contracts. You know, so you would often make three or four decisions on the same item. So you would approve the budget on the item, then you would say, hey, go and, you know, buy this or go and, you know, apply for this grant. And then we would bring the contract back and council would make the decision again. What that does sometimes is it creates a significant, A, it creates the need for special meetings, as I'm sure you're all aware. It doesn't always adhere to the timelines that we have for meetings. And again, when we talk about best practice from managing the relationship between council and administration, council's job really is to approve the budget. And so when you give us that opportunity, we take that responsibility seriously. We make the decisions with the direction that you've provided, and then we enter into those contracts. It allows us to get work started quicker. It allows us to negotiate quicker, and it avoids redundant reporting that's happening, and it, you know, avoids special meetings and things coming that are taking up time on the council agenda. I know Counselor Poirier likes, you know, making sure that we're being responsible with the way we manage time on the agenda. So that's really the most important thing for council. If something was out of budget, it would come back to council. If there was something that made me uncomfortable to the point that I felt like it had to come to council, it would. If there's some sort of legislation that requires something to come to council, it would. And if we had something that we had to do like a sole source or a single source purchase as a result of an emergency, you know, or, or an unusual event, that would come to council. So that's all laid out in section, sorry, I believe it is five, it is, sorry, it is 4.5 of the policy where it goes through the city council responsibilities. So I, I know it is a little bit different, but I can tell you in our work with the solicitors that we hired on this project, it is consistent with best practice. Council approves the budget, administration, you know, you know, takes the projects, does the contract management piece. We are going to retain many of the same processes that we've had to ensure that contracts are coming back to Heather and the mayor for signature, and making sure that Heather and the mayor are in charge of binding the corporation, and then Heather will take the ball and make sure that things are properly filed for record-keeping purposes, to make sure that we don't have contracts and records all over the organization in file drawers and desk drawers. So this is a good news story. We feel that it's going to provide more flexibility, create more efficiencies, and allow us to make better purchasing decisions so that we can make sure that we are spending taxpayer dollars wisely. And really want to thank the SLT on this. It has been quite a long project, and it has required quite a bit of time. In addition to the SLT, we've had a lot of other leaders in the organization also contribute. The staff has been through a fulsome training exercise. And in addition, we now have a brand-new set of templates, which all of those individuals who execute procurement have, so that we no longer have different sort of templates flowing around the organization. Everybody now has a consistent template to work off of. They know what needs to be entered. They know what not to change. And everything has been vetted, you know, by legal counsel. So I feel really strongly about the position that we're in, and I think this is a really good, it's been a good project, learned a lot about our process here at the city, and I think it's just really going to help us speed things up a little bit, but also making sure that we have that balance to make sure we're spending the money wisely.
Counselor Poirier.
Yeah, so just back to your point, like, to me, that's just good governance, like, for the council moving forward. And I could never figure out why we went through three or four steps when we've already approved the budget unless it's over that amount. And that happens from time to time. So kudos to staff for doing that because that's not, that's when we get into weeks. That's when we get into things that really is not our strong responsibility, because we've already approved the budget. So thank you for doing that. I think it's a great step forward. So I went through the policy, and I, and I'm just, there's a couple of questions I had, and this might be just from my own personal experiences. I didn't, unless I missed it, I didn't see anything in there about looking at purchasing consortiums and that, because every public sector organization, and you read it in the paper, you see it in the news, you see it on social media, everybody's struggling with budgets, you know, lack of funding, so on and so forth. And it's proven when you can, when you can, you know, you know, do bulk purchasing with, and there's a lot of commonalities within the public sector. Beyond me, why we don't do more of that. But it's not just the city, it's many organizations in, in, in the city of Canora and whole larger areas. The next, so that's a comment.
Yeah, so, so really quick, 6.5. The city may participate in joint procurement initiatives with other entities where such initiatives are determined to be in the best interest of the city. So that would speak to anything that we're doing with...
Okay, well, I missed that.
No problem. It's a long policy, so.
The next one is 6.2 amounts. I'm just wondering, the norm is 100,000, where do you go up, like, to more, more formal competition? Where do we tell 121,000, 200? I just, more of a curiosity.
So we had some lengthy conversations about this. So industry norm has changed. It was 100,000, but inflation has driven that. We had a good conversation about this, and not a lot of people are aware. There's actually obligations on the municipality to adhere to the Canadian Free Trade Agreement. And so that's where those numbers come from. And so they're indexed to inflation. So every two years, the 121.2, so that used to be 120, it's now 121.2, and also the 302.900 for construction. So that used to be 300, it's now. So those, and so we've done our best to also include language in the policy that would allow that indexing to take place without us having to open up the policy every two years when that changes. So that's, those are obligations that we have as municipalities under the Canadian Free Trade Agreement. You know, that's something that the province and the federal government signed on our behalf. But it is something that we need to be aware of, and if we weren't aware of it, we could always come back and get challenged. And so the reason that we said it there as well, could we have said it lower? Absolutely. But again, it was really important to me to make sure that we have flexibility for the staff. And so provided that they go out and get the three quotes through informal competition, there are those opportunities. There's nothing precluding us from going out and...
Doing it at a lesser value.
Yeah, doing it at a lesser value. And we do do that. We've just put a few out under 121, 200. That's really just, it's a staff decision.
That's fine. That's a, I just, it was a curiosity thing. And my third question is electronic, electronic tendering system. Now, I don't, and again, unless I missed it in the policy when I went through it, is that something that the city made? Because there are efficiencies in doing that. I mean, the amount of paper that shuffles through this organization is just mind-boggling. And it's, it's, it's a standard in any publicly-funded organization, and we are publicly-funded, more so at the local level. But you, you can't even, and I'll give you an example, in a school board, you can't even, you have to have one. Like, that's the law. And, and just from personal experience, they work very well. And I'm just wondering if that's something that, you know, might be looked at in the future.
So there is some language in here, and sorry, I'm scrambling to find it. Could Heather, maybe, because you really, Heather, just while I look here, could you explain what our current process is? Because we do actually put a lot of stuff out electronically, so.
No, I'm talking about a third-party, like, base.
That's what we're talking about.
Okay.
Yeah. So we put, and Marco, I'm not sure if you, Marco, give me a link for me. There he is. So we, we do put a lot of things out on Merx. I'll let Marco explain his, his process for sort of the larger projects. We do need to get better, but I'll, I'll let Marco explain his process first.
Well, I, no, I, I know Merx. I've used it. So I, I just, I didn't know that we use it.
We do. Not for everything. So that's where we're trying to get to. There is something in here that says we will put things out electronically. We haven't committed to a, a vendor in particular because we wanted to make sure that we had flexibility to move from vendor to vendor. And we didn't have to come to council and open up the policy every time we changed from a Merx to a Bidingo to, you know, those are some of the platforms that are available. So I'm sorry, I'm still struggling to find it in here. But I, I do know we have language in here that things will be put out electronically. So that's, that is best practice, and that is something that we are striving to do.
So you're six, 6.5.
Thank you. I'm way too far.
Thank you very much. I didn't know we used an actual third-party provider.
I would say, I would say for some of the lower-level stuff, some of the plans, we need to get there at stake, so.
Yeah. And just so you know, in, depending on the type of things that we're trying to procure, sometimes we'll go across multiple systems. Because, for example, Merx is very, very common in Manitoba. Where in Northwestern Ontario, it's not quite as common. So again, we'll just look at what we're trying to procure, and we'll choose the best path based, or this platform based on what we're trying to procure.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions, comments? All right. We're moving on. Item 1.6, operating budget approval. Back to you, Charlotte.
So in the background line two, the date should be April 25th, not 24th. We met and discussed the operating budget. Council sent us away saying that we would like to see the impact of eliminating or not eliminating, but deferring the following three projects. The signed bylaw review for $15,000, deferral of the active transportation plan for $100,000, $25,000, which comes from the net tax levy, and deferral of the cemetery office renovations, 71938 coming from the net tax levy. As a result, the total additional requirement from the net tax levy 2022 over 2021 requirement is $809,002. That represents 2.92% of the total tax levy requirement over 2021. This does not mean that individual tax rates will go up by that amount. In fact, the residential tax rate will go up by less than that amount. And we're looking at probably 2.17% for the residential tax rate. And that's just still in draft form, but we went through and did a preliminary, Michelle did a preliminary calculation of the tax rates. Other tax rates, commercial, industrial will go up more than that. Residential will be less than the 2.92%.
Thanks for that clarification, Charlotte. That's, that's important. Counselor...
Kyle had any comments?
Yeah. And, and so we just opted to forego the tax rate report today because we just wanted to give council an opportunity to ask any questions on the budget. And once we have final passage, then we will move forward with that report and the corresponding bylaw. So this is the budget as council requested, returned for Cal. So does council have any questions with regards to the state of the operating budget?
Counselor Poirier.
Yeah, so just, like, if, you know, if we looked at past this at the main meeting, just our messaging, make sure that that's exactly what goes out. Because if you just looked at this right now, like, just anybody read that, they'd say, my taxes are going up 2.92%. There's no distinction between commercial, industrial, residential, or what have you. We have to tell people that. And we have to do a better job of telling people that. Because if residents on average is 2.17, that's a difference, a huge difference between 2.92. So I, I think in the messaging, we have to actually provide more information to, because we're here for the taxpayers. And they want to know, let's give them the information. And, I mean, I'm not happy we have to raise taxes, but that's a reality. Until we get a handle on leasing costs, you know, we're going to see our taxes continue to increase and not go to things like our previous presenter talked about, our, our infrastructure deficit. We're paying for programs just to keep them going. And so I, you know, reluctantly will approve this, but people, we have to understand, people are hurting out there right now. It's not just taxes. It's not just water bills. It's everything. You know, gas, grocery store, if anybody hears, and then groceries took in the last little while, how the changes occurred. It's, everything is going up. And when you add all that collectively, it's not just a little increase, it's a huge increase to people that are struggling and having a hard time to afford basics in life. So we also have to keep that in the back of our mind when we're moving forward. So that's all I'm going to say on the, on the operating budget thing.
Counselor McGinn, did you ever come in?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm supportive of the operating budget coming in. And Charlotte, a question, and I may need some help with this question. What I always find interesting each year the budget comes out, and our communication perhaps can focus on this, is there, is a considerable amount of that that's uncontrollable cost? And it's not smoke and mirrors. It is a reality. I think Counselor Poirier mentioned policing costs, district service board, Pinecrest, Northwestern Health Unit. And if one were to, and bear with me on this, because it's a little out there, but if one were to take those pieces away, the actual operating increase to our residents based on city costs is a bit less. And I, I'm not sure how to phrase that, but I think it's key to continue to point that, that out to the public in our communication. Because when we say we don't have any control over this cost, we literally do not. It's legislated, and the municipality has to pick it up. So the, the impact, if I may, if those costs were covered, we'd be fine. So anyway.
That's a great point, Counselor McGinn. So I just, I want to dig in on that a little bit. So, so we see 2.92%, okay? And Charlotte said, you know, we estimate that about 2.17 would be the increase to residential. So the increase that we get from those external agencies that you're talking about, Counselor McGinn, is 1.21. So if you do a little bit of math, 2.17 minus 1.21, that means that the costs that the city are putting forward are actually less than 1%. So I, I just, I'm not sure if you could hear me there in the back row. But I just want to reiterate that the costs that the city are generating by choice to members of the public through a tax rate increase is less than 1% on a residential property. So, you know, everybody, you know, you know, Counselor Poirier, you can't go anywhere right now without understanding that costs have gone up. Given some of the chases, changes that we've made, given some of the decisions that we've made, given some of the things that are out of our control, I really feel strongly that this is a prudent and responsible budget to put in front of council and in front of members of the public, even though that we are coming out the other side of this pandemic. And I recognize that has been very challenging two-plus years for people. But I just think it's important that we really dig into the context and take Counselor McGinn and Counselor Poirier's point loud and clear. We need to make sure that we do a good job communicating that so members of the public can understand, you know, that it's a little more complicated than just one number and can't be summed up by that one number in the frame, in the, you know, 2.92. So.
Hear that loud and clear, Tim?
Good.
Counselor Smith.
Yeah, thanks. I'm, I'm supportive of the budget and want to thank the staff for their good work. But after what happened this year with winter maintenance, and it's what I've said before, is what taxpayers are most concerned about is their infrastructure, is the roads they travel on, and, and the safety. And I think... And I think that we're going to be, have to look very carefully at doing better planning, um, for the cap, both capital and operating next year so that we can address those challenges. And I know we will have those discussions moving forward because I honestly think that we can do things better and we need to do things better. And I'd like to, um, especially for the operations staff, I just, I can't thank them enough, um, for the pressure they were under this year and how they rose to that challenge. It's, it's been a really difficult year. I don't think this is going to be a anomaly going forward with climate change. We need to be better prepared and the budget is how we speak to, to that. And over all the calls, particularly this year and probably my whole term, the infrastructure is the stuff I've heard, um, um, that impacts people the most and that's what they want to see. So I know Kyle, that you are taking this seriously and going forward, we're going to try to, um, um, look at what we're, we're doing, we, we've been doing that we can do better. And, um, I think that's an expectation of the community this year, so.
No, I appreciate those comments, Counselor Smith. You know, you, you alluded earlier, um, we have taken some steps to inject some staff into that department to make sure that we can do the planning that is necessary and it, and it is important. You know, I had a, a counselor very early in my career, he said, you know, I don't want a plan that's just going to sit on a shelf and gather dust. And so, you know, he's right. And on the other hand, you know, we don't want a plan, a plan that's sitting on a shelf gathering dust, but if we have a plan that we're using on a regular basis that is providing good information, that is allowing us to help make better decisions, uh, that's time and money well spent. And so that's something that we're trying to prioritize right now. Uh, of course, there's sort of two sides of that. Some of the issues that we're dealing with right now, whether it pertains to potholes or snow removal, or some of the issues that we're having up north with roads flooding, uh, you know, a lot of that falls under the operating budget. And so, you know, Counselor Poirier, the point, you know, people are hurting right now, they don't necessarily want to see tax rates go up. Uh, you heard loud and clear, uh, from Public Sector Digest, who again, I want to reiterate, they do this for a living. They go around to municipalities, they do a deep dive into their assets and they come forward with recommendations. Just on the capital side alone, um, there are significant increases that they're recommending that we aren't meeting. And then when we talk about the operating increases that would be necessary to make sure that we're taking care of rural roads in the manner that people up north of the bypass are expecting, uh, when we have a rough year from a potable perspective, when we have a rough year from a snowfall perspective, to make sure that we can, um, to, to make sure that we can respond to that in a timely manner. But, you know, as you said, Counselor Smith, our staff has done an exceptional job with very little. And I, I think it's worth mentioning that there has been some significant turnover in that department. And I cannot say enough how proud I am of the team and the work that they've done. And they're out there today, uh, you know, doing the best they can to try and, um, you know, deal with some issues that are, you know, frankly beyond our control when it comes to weather and precipitation and through no fault of their own, um, they're, they're trying to correct. So certainly the team and I do take that seriously. We have work to do, we have planning to do, we have started, um, to take some of those steps, but, uh, the thing about planning is that it does take time as well. So it's not something that we're going to be, uh, 100% prepared for next year, but we're going to be more prepared and we're just going to keep chipping away at it and, and make sure that we can put good options in front of council so that you can make decisions based on what you're hearing and based on what you're seeing, uh, out in the community.
And just as a follow-up, I think that, um, because I follow social media and I listen to what people are telling me all the time, and I really think it's important to note, uh, and for people to recognize that, um, when they talk about, why are you working in the harbor front as opposed to infrastructure? I think it's really important to know, to note that most municipalities struggle with the soft services, but the recreation, the green spaces and all of that, and all of that stuff. But that's really important to build your community, have people attract to your community. Staff have been, um, um, very diligent in going after all of that funding so that when we get that funding from senior levels of government, um, and so we, for those projects, and we can see them all around our community, all you have to do is look at how we're building our community and making it more resilient and, and you know, recovery after, um, COVID and everything, is those grants are giving us the ability, um, to do those projects without debt financing, without additional tax levy. And, um, so, um, where we have to chip in perhaps 10%, uh, I think that's, um, well worth it to get 90% funding for those projects that taxpayers otherwise would not be able to, to, um, afford. I look at our municipal accommodation tax, what a great source of revenue that was for building the tourism, the economic development infrastructure, and without that, we couldn't be doing those projects. So I think it's important taxpayers to look at and say, you know what, we'd be silly not to grab that funding and to pull out the additional funding out of reserves to make that happen. So we have been so fortunate to grab that funding and hopefully in the future, we can continue to do that. It's important for taxpayers to know that. Thanks, Kyle.
Counselor Mollin.
Thank you. Yeah, the biggest complaint we have here now is about the potholes, but we have to realize that's not just Kenora, that's everywhere, especially Winnipeg here, they had the same weather we did. It was on the news last night that the province has to put in $10 million extra and mainly because of the potholes and the damage to the roads. So we have to keep this in mind as we're going forward with the different budgets. But I support the budget as presented here now. Thanks.
Yeah, I appreciate those kind words and I, I do just want to say, um, the staff has done an exceptional job. That, that money is going to some community somewhere. And, uh, every single day, I want that money in our community and the staff has done an incredible job making sure that that money is coming here and they deserve kudos for that. So thank you for those kind words.
And let's not forget, it's not just snow and potholes. Now we're into, into a rain season and, uh, a personal note, I just noticed that Beaver Dam broke at my place and that's now flowing under the redded road at some point and hopefully not too strongly. But there's a lot of that, uh, around. Uh, city crews are working as hard as they can. I really, uh, rankle sometimes when I hear people squawking about, uh, one particular issue over another. They have to understand that just like an emergency department, we have to triage our efforts and staff are doing everything that they possibly can. Um, and, uh, that's, I guess that's the nub of that situation, that, that staff and, uh, and that those departments are doing everything that they possibly can. Uh, that's not quite to the operating budget approval, but, uh, oh, Charlotte's got something there.
And just a point, uh, to your point that, uh, in 2022, two of our biggest road projects are 100% funded.
Yeah.
Not just nine, but 100%.
And, and that's Railway Street and also?
Highway 17.
Thank you, Michelle.
Big stuff.
So Heather tells me we can pass the rates at council if that's right.
The tax.
The tax rates, uh, at council next week. Bring that forward.
Perfect.
And just one more, um, finance department, fun fact, you can now have your tax bill emailed to you this year. So we'll be hearing some communication on that. Um, if we pass the rates next week, uh, we can bill in June and, um, Rachel has, has done some work so that we can get those by email.
That's so exciting.
Streamlining and modernizing, I gotta say. Administration has really done a wonderful job of streamlining and modernizing everything and I really appreciate all the efforts of everybody for that. That's, uh, one less piece of paper in my house is wonderful.
We just, uh, we just need to, uh, warn Counselor Smith when that shows up in your inbox and ask to push delete.
All right. Uh, any further questions on that? We're moving that forward to next week. Uh, item 1.7, tariff fees and changes, or change, uh, fees and charges, environmental services division.
That's over to me.
And Heather.
So as Charlotte just said, uh, Charlotte and Michelle sighed a great sense of relief to be, uh, moving forward with the operating budget. Uh, we, uh, as administration will also have a sigh of relief to move past this next item. Um, so as part of the solid waste utility budget, council did approve user fee increases. And in the two areas where council provided user fee increases were both in the bag tag sales and in the general user fee areas. Um, so you'll recall as part of that discussion, um, the general, uh, the recommendation was to have a tiered rate, residential and non-resident, uh, resident and non-resident, um, with a total revenue increase of 158,734. There was also, um, a tiered rate built into the, uh, general user fee increases. So those are things that go over the scale. And, um, there was a, a projected revenue increase of $310,000. So the report that I've presented today, so now in order to enact those, uh, changes in through the tariff fees and charges bylaw, we need to pass that bylaw and indicate where those increases will be included in that bylaw. So I provided options to council to continue with, uh, the recommendation earlier that was discussed during the budget time with the tiered rate. Uh, that was option number one. Or going to a general increase, which was option number two of 275 in the bag tag area, or option number three, um, of one rate for everyone of 250. And these are again, just for the bag tag area. The revenue amounts or projected revenues are included within the report for each option. And then, uh, also in the general user fee increases area, I included option one, two, and three of what Charlotte and Makena have added these figures. So we are, uh, pretty confident on those revenues, projected revenues. Um, again, and if you go back to the bag tag projected revenues, what you will likely see is a spike in sales, uh, before the rate increase takes place. That's pretty normal. People will rush out and buy a bunch of bag tags before there's a rate increase. So those revenues could be higher, um, just based on people going out and purchasing, um, extra tags. So within the report, there are options to ensure that we meet the projected revenues that were already included in that approved budget. Um, but rec, but at this time, administration's recommending, um, this, the one rate, uh, and removing the tiered rate and still meeting the projected revenues that council approved as part of that budget.
Counselor, Counselor Smith.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that back, um, uh, Heather. And, um, my choice is to support, I think it's option three for residential at $2.50. And after I read the asset management, um, report yesterday, I see that solid waste of all of our divisions is doing really well. And, um, the annual deficit is not that high. I think by having one, one rate and at this time, until we can do further study about what that landfill will cost us in the future, I'm prepared to support a $2.50 increase right across the board.
Counselors, Counselor, uh, McMillan first.
Okay. Um, thank you. And, uh, thanks for bringing this back. I mean, from an administrative point of view, is it just fairly straightforward to change whatever the outcome is, Heather? Okay. Um, well, based on the silver second thought, um, I, I lean towards, uh, option three to make it uniform across at 250 for a bag tag. And like, would like to suggest that, that, uh, bag tags, uh, be reviewed, be reviewed once every council term, uh, to determine cost. And even a review could say that, uh, this term, we're not increasing the bag tag or we are increasing the bag tag, but that provides will be put in perhaps from a timing perspective in the third year of the term, um, to be looked at. But, um, I'm, I'm supportive of, uh, uh, option number three. I, I, and I guess, uh, another comment is that, um, originally we, we supported the tiered rate, which I did, um, and there was a difference. Now, if, if we're going to a uniform rate, I think the 250 per bag tag is a, is a, to me is a happy medium and an area to, to agree upon. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Chase.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, I concur with both my colleagues on their positions of a, a fee increase to 250 per bag tag. Um, we just spent some time talking about how people are hurting, the cost of gas, the cost of groceries. Uh, I think a fee increase to 250 is a reasonable amount, more reasonable than 275. Uh, it's been no secret, I don't support a tiered system. Um, so, you know, having said that, I, I think a 250 increase across the board is, is where we should go and that's what I would support. Thank you.
Counselor Poirier.
Uh, thank you. So first off, uh, thank you to staff for, um, you know, bringing back the report. Um, and I, I mean, I'll, I'll be quite honest, I was, uh, a supporter of, uh, option one. Upon reflection, uh, listened to other counselors, some, some of the in-staff, but particular people in the, in the public, and I saw some of the negatives of doing that. I, I, and more so in that I pardon my position as to whether it's even, uh, worth the extra effort to try and distinguish between a resident and non-resident. I'm not convinced that we have the mechanisms in place without having, uh, people up at operations, uh, spending their time distinguishing. And I think we've got enough issues to deal with. Uh, so thank you for that. Uh, I'm with, uh, colleagues about, uh, I would support option three at 250. Uh, that will still, uh, ensure that we, um, if memory serves me correctly, to build up the reserves. Um, uh, you know, and again, what Counselor Smith said when you looked at on the asset management, it was one of the shining, uh, areas right now that were, were least deficit. Um, so I think we can go with that right now. We don't have to hit a home run every time we go up and raise these increase, or increases, uh, fees. It can be staged and it's a good, uh, option of all that council, you know, and it's a great option for subsequent councils to review it from time to time. But I, I'm, uh, I, I support option three. I can't support option two. I'll, I'll be quite honest, if it, I guess if it comes for a vote, I, I will be of the negative on that one. So, thank you.
Counselor Mollin.
Thank you. Yes, I support that option number three, the $2.50. But the main reason for it is because the prices haven't gone up in the last, I think it's close to 20 years or something. So I'm in favor of option three. Thanks.
Can I just add clarification on council's, uh, position on the general user fees? Uh, option two and three, if you just go to the residential rate, um, the minimum charge. So that increases, when you go across the scale currently, you pay $15 if you just have a truck and even if you don't go to the maximum weight amount, you're paying 15. Option number two takes it to 18 and option number three, uh, three takes it to 20. So we just need, um, council's position on that as well, um, because that does change. And I've included in the report, under the two options, what those budgeted projected revenues would be.
Thanks for that clarification. I was going to go for that. Any other, any, any point on or any questions or comments on that? There are two separate options, right? There's the, there's the bag tag and then there's the, uh, taking your vehicle across the border or across the, the scales.
And as a reminder, council did approve those increases as well. It wasn't just the bag tags as part of the, um, the, uh, solid waste budget. Uh, there was increases in both areas, generally user fees as well as the bag tag fees. So we need to, um, address those revenues that have already been approved. So it's whether council wants to support the, um, rate at the 18 or the 20.
As I look at it, is if you're, if you're taking eight bags of garbage at $2 a bag, you're going to bring it to the, or across the scale, you're paying $15. Whereas now, if you bring in eight bags at 250, you're at $20. I'm, I'm in favor of the $20 at that rate. It keeps it, it keeps it fairly even and it's not that punitive.
I can concur with that.
So you'll see it takes the revenues, the total projected revenues from 281 to 69 to 473, 415. So those will exceed the projected revenues that we've, sorry.
Go ahead.
It will exceed the projected revenues that we, uh, council approved in the budget.
So based on the consensus we're hearing from council, we're going to go with, uh, option three, which is 250, uh, for the bag tag and option three, which is $20. Sorry about that. Is it option, no, option three?
Option three.
Three for both.
Yes, three for both. Okay. So, uh, to the chair for the vote. I guess the vote, that's next week.
Next week. And, uh, let's update the old adage about, uh, inevitability of death and taxes. Let's add user fees.
Okay. So when it comes to council next week, it will be adopting the new tariff fees and charges bylaw, which will include, um, these two rates.
And we feel confident that it allows the revenue to.
Yes.
Yes. All right. Moving on, uh, council code of conduct policy. And that would be you, I would imagine, Heather.
That's me. I'll be on a roll here for a little bit.
You're the teacher.
So council code of conduct policy, again, the municipal act authorizes, um, council to establish codes of conduct for their members. Um, and the, all of the, the code of conduct. And the, all of the, the code of conduct basically sets the minimum standards for council's behavior at the council table and outward, so when you're not at the council table. It provides a mechanism for members of the public to voice their concerns and also the process that is taken for violations. It also regulates a range of conduct, which includes things like, you know, receipts of gifts and business relations and things like that. So there is a process that is included within the policy and is fairly standard for most municipalities in Ontario. Any questions?
Counselor McMillan.
I think, if I may, just a general comment. I support the code of conduct, and I appreciate, Heather, the thoroughness of it. It's no surprise to anybody, the more and more we look at municipal world and articles that we receive, more and more people are having investigations through the integrity commission, and things are, I think, being held more accountable, which I feel is a good thing, particularly around the area of harassment and funds. But I think it's critical that these policies are in place to serve as a guide for council members, but also very important at the time we're at now with the, an election coming up, with new councillors coming on, that if there are any of them out there when this gets passed, is to take a serious look at this. Because you can step into a hornet's nest without realizing the impacts of the significance of these policies. So I definitely support it, and it's key that we all be aware of this policy. It's a fine line.
There was a comment I was gonna make about those municipal world daily, that's my morning chuckle. There are unbelievable things that happen in municipal councils across the country. So yeah, code of conduct, very much so. I think we can all live with it. Questions or comments? All right. Now, Heather, you're gonna take words and committees?
Yeah, so the next one, this really just aligns and ties well with the council code of conduct policy. It provides standards for boards and committees, which is really important, because these members of the public are representing the city and do sometimes speak on behalf of the city. So it is important that they are aware that there's minimum standards for the conduct and that there is expectations under, being a representative on a board and committee to see that there is conduct standards that are provided. And again, this aligns with most other municipalities in Ontario.
Questions, comments? Nope. Let's move on to lame ducks.
Lame duck. All right. So many of you have been around the council table for quite some time and are aware of the lame duck provisions that will, may come into effect. I've outlined in the policy when those periods will begin. First period is August 19th, nomination day, to October 24th, election day. The second period is election day to November 14th, which is the last term of this council. So during that time, there is potential for a lame duck period, which means that 75% of you may not be here. So that would put us in a lame duck period, where if you're not running for council, you're not reelected to council. This policy and by law will appoint authority, delegate authority to our chief administrative officer for those two lame duck periods, should they apply, and provide him with signing authority for expenditures outside of the current budget exceeding $50,000, and for the disposition of any real property exceeding $50,000 during that time.
No questions, comments?
I was super comfy with the disposition.
All right.
We're gonna get that town island done way before that.
Yes. Okay. Use of corporate resources for election purposes policy. It takes this, this is you again?
Yeah, this is me. So again, as part of my election process, a lot of these reports regarding policies are part of my election process, preparing for the election. This is just an update and refresh to this policy. There's some different changes under the municipal elections act that have established further regulations under the use. It also incorporates the third-party advertisers, which were new in the 2018 election. This policy has been updated to reflect that.
Questions, comments, or it, Counselor McMillan?
Yeah, just a general comment. Like, looking at all these policies and looking at past elections, it's just to acknowledge and recognize that this is kind of a very hectic time for our city clerk. And so to keep on top of this with an election and to keep on top of other things, I think, for me as a councillor, I'm gonna be a little bit more vigilant with my emails and requests that I make. So I wish you well, Heather.
Thanks. Hopefully it's my last one.
Don't be scaring us now. All right. Moving on to parking lots and structures by law amendments. Heather Laishness?
Yes, I begged her to attend.
Who was gonna hire this?
Anyways, parking. So this report's being brought forward to council to consider changes to the parking lots and structures by law, specifically for lots within the by law, being the Kuwaiton Arena, the South Harbour Front, the Kuwaiton Boat Launch, and the Park Street Lot. So as per the background of the report, each year, staff will meet prior to the busy summer months to discuss parking in various areas of the city and any challenges from the previous year, and then will try to come up with suggestions going forward to make things easier, to help alleviate issues, and enhance the experience for our residents and visitors when it comes to parking and use of our boat launches. So the parking lots are in alphabetical order as per the report. So the Kuwaiton Arena parking lot, the amendments to this are just to make changes to the layout of the lot. So currently, there is no parking plan within that lot. We have single vehicles, vehicles with trailers, and everyone just kind of parks where they want to. Single vehicles end up parking in the center of the lot, taking up the larger spaces where the vehicles with trailers can go. There really is nowhere else within Kuwaiton that a vehicle with a trailer can park, other than the Kuwaiton Boat Lift Launch. So we're just putting up some signage, rejigging the parking lot, so that we can have the single vehicles park where it best works for them to park, and vehicles with trailers park where it best works for them. And that's a complaint that I get often, is the parking lot will fill up with vehicles with trailers, and people will get frustrated, and they'll park along the side and take up 10 or 12 single spots. So hopefully this will help. We'll put it to the test and see what happens. The next lot is the South Harbour Front Lot. So the recommendation is to have no lease parking during the months of July and August in that lot. Reason being is during the summer months, there's an increase in demand for parking downtown with our special events and whatnot. For example, Market Wednesdays, I have one to two staff sitting at the South Harbour Front Lot with a barricade, letting maximum 25-day parkers come in there during the day, keeping all the lease spots available for the lease customers. Sometimes the lease customers aren't parked there during, you know, their vacation and whatnot. So people are pulling up, saying, like, there's a spot right there, no, you can't come in. They get mad. So we're recommending that those lease spaces not be available for the summer, but lease parking would still be available to those customers in other areas, such as the Park Street Lot. There's a few spots in the Parky, the Chicken Street Lot, maybe not as close to where they want to be, or they can choose to pay for day parking in various day parking lots downtown. The third lot is the Kuwaiton Boat Launch. So that's the Boat Lift Boat Launch, where you can access both Lake of the Woods and the Winnipeg River. Currently, the lot is free daily parking. It is presumed that some people that maybe previously used the Kuwaiton Arena, now that there's a $5 fee implemented there, they've migrated over to that launch because it's free. So a lot of those boats are, a lot of the people using that launch may be accessing the lake and taking up spaces from people that could be wanting to access the river. There is no other public boat launch, to my knowledge, or no city-owned boat launch that allows launching onto the Winnipeg River. So we're looking to implement the $5 daily rate in this lot as well to be consistent with the other public boat launches that have vehicle and trailer parking. And then the Park Street Parking Lot, in April 2021, there was an amendment made, proposed by economic development, to this lot to allow free parking during evenings and weekends. It was passed by council. We overlooked ordering signage for this lot. And then when we reviewed at the beginning of this year, this summer, we decided the 7:00 AM start time for the lease customers maybe should be changed to 6:00 AM, just if people are coming to work prior to 7:00, if there are people in their spots, at least their spots are available as of 6:00 AM. So that was the only change to that one. And we've ordered signage to make these changes. And I think I've covered everything, but if there's any questions, if you know.
Counselor Smith, comment on the Kuwaiton parking lots?
Heather, this is a really good report. It's well thought out, and you've really cleaned up some of the areas that have been needing cleaned up for a very long time. That Kuwaiton parking lot, for sure, you know, having the trailers and the single vehicles more clearly laid out and enforced, that's gonna make a real difference in that parking lot. And I've been an advocate for, I think that under that back part of the Kuwaiton Arena was underutilized. There's tons of space there. I've said it several times at this table, that we need to be developing that space and using it. So I'm really pleased with that. I like how you're going to deal with the south parking lot down here, and I think communication is gonna be key to the regular users. I cannot believe what a waste of staff resources, having by law officers standing down there and monitoring a parking lot. That's crazy. So yeah, for sure, that's a good way to clean that up. So I'm fully supportive of this. It's well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
No further comments, questions? All right. Bring that forward next week. Item 1.13, deputy mayor appointment. Heather, this is you?
This is me. All right. So this report, just in accordance with our procedural by law, we have a deputy acting mayor already built into that procedural by law, which is a rotation and is appointed by resolution at the inaugural meeting of council. So the deputy mayor acts in the absence of the mayor. And we, through, right now, we have, each councillor's had the opportunity to have a deputy mayor or acting mayor rotation, with the exception of Counselor Chase, because he just came to the table last year. And at this time, Counselor Van Wellingham is not in a position to take this rotation on for the last eight months. And so it has been, it is being recommended that Counselor Goss take the last role of deputy mayor, and we won't talk about the short straw that he drew. We get that.
Who is this guy?
He wasn't at the meeting, and he left him.
It's amazing how the circle comes back around, isn't it?
Yeah, just started alphabetically back to G.
Yeah, thank you. For different health reasons, I couldn't commit or guarantee my attendance with some of the extra time required. So I thought it'd be best to do this, and I thank Counselor Goss for filling in my position.
Now that my son tells me that I'm retired, I'm able to spend the time.
So because it's in our procedural by law, and it is appointed through resolution at the inaugural meeting, we require a resolution to...
Okay, we'll bring this forward to the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just looking at my time here, we're still good. Fire an emergency quarterly report. And Kent, table's yours.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you. Are you on here?
Yes.
Yep, we're here.
Perfect. Yeah. So just to turn through some of the highlights of the quarterly reports. Again, just more of an information piece for you to keep up to date with what we're doing personally. Staffing levels have stayed relatively the same we did at a deputy chief class in March, so that's a very welcome addition to our compliments. So happy to see that. We are just entering recruitment for paid-on call fire counters, so that might be a new term for some people. Changing from the volunteer term to the paid-on call, it's a trend that's happening, I would say, across Canada. It just kind of recognizes the actual commitment and requirements that we expect and have for our part-time members, our paid-on call members. So they are paid wage and everything else, and they do have WSIB. A lot of those things are kind of, the volunteer term has carried on for a long time since it was truly volunteering, most of our services across Ontario and across Canada. So we made that slight change when we went into our recruitment here, and hoping that also garners a little more interest in our hiring some new members. Besides that, we had a little, I'd say, a little average first quarter call volume-wise, which did bounce around, so that's totally up there by any means. Next quarter could be, you know, extremely above average. When we look at our training times, response times, we're still gauging the metrics we want to use to do this. This isn't something we've traditionally reported on in the NARA, so it's something we want to report on. We're just kind of gauging what metrics and then how we're gonna use this information. So you'll probably see, until we get, you know, a year into this reporting, those numbers bounce around a little, and we're trying to, you know, pull out exactly what we want to pull out moving forward. So is this more of a start to a process? So don't get too hot on any of that. We did have some, you know, significant events in the first quarter, a few structured fires that, you know, we did end up with a lot of people and a lot of trucks on scene. We got no injuries, no fatalities, no injuries there. And training, so we did ramp up our training a little bit, more supportive compared to Laish here. The first, I'd say, three weeks, we didn't because of COVID outbreaks, but now we're paid-on call or training weekly, our career guys are training weekly. So we're kind of ramping that up, and we're continuing to, you know, different seasons here and focusing on different things. So that's been positive. Part prevention, we did have a few things, again, with the first quarter being hampered a little bit by COVID, less so than we'd like to see. But now, as we start to get rid of that, with Deputy Pratt on board, that's gonna bump up our prevention and education activities. We're very confident in that, so we're happy to see that and move forward in those areas. One of our things, the highlights, in April, we were approached by Oshimis Day, First Nation, to sit down with them to look at the potential of providing services to their community. This is something we do for Dolls and Bradburg currently. So Deputy Pratt and I self did sit down and have a very, I'd say, quick and informal meeting on just kind of, you know, a touch base on what they would like to see and kind of what we're currently doing for the other communities. So there has been a few communications since, but before anything more happened with that, we will be bringing it to every quarter forward to you to make that final decision. So we're just kind of in the early stages, I would say, of any discussions of that. That's what I have for the first quarter. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions? No comments? That looks good, Kent. Do you want to move on to the 911 service agreement?
Sure. Thank you. So this one, it's an agreement we already have with Bell. So currently, Bell is the service provider for 911 across the province, so it's not really a choice. It's not something you're going to have to price care out. The reason this one's coming forward is that we need to update our agreements, not because it's expired, but because there's a change in the 911 structure in Canada, actually, but it's more specifically in Ontario. So as we transition from regular 911 to next generation 911, we need to sign a big contract with Bell. What next generation 911 will do, is it offers more 911 capabilities and services. So in the future, you'll be able to text 911, you'll be able to send pictures or videos to 911 dispatchers, and they can forward that information on to the first responders. So we're still, you know, a little ways out. Some requirements are announced until, you know, 2024, 2025, but this is the first step in going on board. It doesn't affect us as a fire service or as a city yet, in a way that, from a cost perspective, this is with follow-up to our dispatch center, which is the crack center in the RAR. So they'll have to do some upgrades to their equipment, but that's something they've already marked off for quite some time now, so... So they're in a very good position for this as well. So like I said, this is just more of a, we need some correction to this side of this new contract. It just replaces what we have and opens the door for some new technology.
Any questions, counsel? No, I'm excited to see the new technology rolling out. I think there's some really good premises in that report. So I think that's it for you, Kent.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to engineering and infrastructure quarterly reports.
So Marco, I know you weren't here to draft, or you know, you didn't draft the report, but would you like to comment on anything? Just, I mean, it's a lengthy report. We don't need to go through it, Marco. Just anything high level that you just want to speak to from the first quarter?
No, I think everybody kind of knows the trials and tribulations we've gone through in Canora. Snow removals, snowfall and whatnot. More recently, the potholes and ex-flooded roads and more jam sector of the town. So I think some of the projects that engineering was more related to in the course of the last quarter have been more tendering projects which have gone out, which will be starting here shortly. I think some of the projects already been included in some of the sewer water sectors in terms of upgrading some of the facilities sewer, sewer plant and pumping stations. So I guess our shift will be going obviously from season to season, getting out of winter maintenance and now getting more into spring and summertime operations. I guess the next big kick will be the sweeping program and getting lines painted here as quick as we can. And seeing what, I guess, on the major grids for the summer in terms of the rain or whatnot, controlling the river downs and flooding and whatnot, high lake levels and, you know, precipitation in the season or so. I don't know if there's any specific questions in regards to what's happened with the last quarter?
I don't see any questions here, Marco, so we can move on to your next, the general engineering services proposal.
Okay. So this, this is being brought forth to secure a consulting engineering company that we can kind of call on on bonus notice or on special projects and whatnot without, you know, having to, I guess, reinvent the wheel in terms of going up the quest for the bonus tenders and whatnot, these kinds of services that will make profit. I kind of see in the report there, trying to order the attention safely in terms of what we may need services from this consultant. And basically we're looking at bringing this consultant onboard for up to a three-year term. Two one-year renewals after that, if things are, are working well, you know, the city or consultant. So this will supplement, I guess, any type of requirements needed on an ongoing basis where we need some assistance for specialty projects that we don't have, you know, a specialty in house staff to deal with or workloads or, you know, things of that age that might pop up. So the budgeting for this will be, I guess, specific to those who may tap into it. And I believe there is some money put aside into the operating budget to account for potential use of some of these services as required. So I think it will be a good resource going forward, you know, in order to assist the engineering department and other departments of the city that they need, especially engineering services. And when we run into difficulties in terms of not having enough horsepower and staff to carry out some of the projects we may be wanting to accomplish. I think it's a good, good news story to have that resource kind of at our back and call in terms of having a engineering company that's going to be, you know, working with the city on an ongoing basis for at least, you know, potentially after three years, we can go give a leadership and have those services at our more readily available opportunity, I guess, as certain instances and situations arise.
And counsel, any questions? I appreciate this, Marco, and I'm sure that you appreciate it too because it's going to free up a lot of staff resources, especially when we've got lots of crunches in staff availability. So I'm 100% in favor of this.
Yeah, and I think it's key just like from a specialization standpoint, you know, Marco and Dave are trained in particular, particular types of engineering. And so when we get a little bit inside of that, this gives us an opportunity to tag an expert from outside the organization. So that's a big asset to have.
I concur. Any other questions, Marco? All right, item 3.3 Budget Amendment, Canora area landfill perimeter road. That's you, Makesh?
Oh, that would be, I'll carry that one.
You carry that one? Fine.
So in regards to the landfill, under a third rule of the Ministry of Environment or MECP, as part of the workings of the landfill, we're trying to have a perimeter road around the landfill. And we've been lucky enough that the way we've, I guess, progressed with the landfill to date, that we didn't need to put that time and effort and cost into the perimeter road. And in the last inspection or so, we're getting to the stage where the landfill is pretty much filled out in terms of its full footprint. And the MECP is now requesting the city to install this perimeter road for access for, I guess, a couple of reasons for obviously getting based in and out of the landfill. Being able to actually transfer or, I guess, travel around the landfill for inspection purposes along with the road being built, which will actually help in regards to channeling and directing certain runoffs surrounding the landfill, both within interior and footprint. So with that being said, last year we had a $500,000 budget set aside for implementation for the first base of the road. And One Creek Construction, a successful contractor, started work in September and we ran out of time due to inclement weather and earlier winter than anticipated last year. So we did anticipate some work to be cleaned up in the spring, which there was a carryover amount estimated at budget time last year. And again, with approval of the budget and, I guess, the lack of sufficient progress that was anticipated last year, there was a shortfall of the amount that was being anticipated 2022 to finish the project. So basically the unspent money went back into the reserves and now we're going to need those funds back out of the reserves to finish the project. And it's anticipated the original $500,000 budget that was set aside last year should be more than adequate to complete the works in 2022 here. So basically it's kind of money in and money out. It's not new funding. It's money that went back into the reserves, same project wasn't finished last year and need to be completed this spring.
Counselor Smith?
Yeah, Marco, we've been kicking around this project, I think, for more than one or two years for sure. And I think that when we first discussed it, that road would act as a fire break around, around the landfill also. It was one of the original reasons for, for doing that perimeter road. So yeah, it would be nice to see this one off the books.
Yeah, and moving forward, this, this will just kind of wrap up phase two. And I guess the way that by should hold up with, with 2022, this would be the completion of phase one. And there's actually more funding in the 2023 budget to actually get to the point where we might be able to finish the whole perimeter road. This phase one probably gets us close to halfway around the landfill. So there will be another phase still planned for 2023.
Counselor, for you.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. To Marco, it's Andrew. So you alluded to the fact earlier, this is a directive from the Ministry of Environment, correct? Like we don't have a choice or?
Yeah, that's correct. So the directive through the Ministry of Environment isn't saying you need a perimeter road. Basically their approval is, you know, the landfill, you know, that instituted and first put into service back in the early 2000s is the consultant who worked with the, with the city at the time created a basically an operations network. It had drawings and how the landfill should be operated, where the garbage should be dumped over time and whatnot. And part of that required is that submission that MECP would approve through that operation document included this perimeter road. So yes, it's, in a roundabout way, it was, it was required as part of the landfill development in which that policy, that material and operation guidance document was approved by the MECP or ME back in the day to say this is what the blueprint followed.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, counsel? Thanks, Marco.
Okay, thank you.
I guess we've got a little bit of time for a few items before we take a break for the statutory meeting. Stace, Christmas presents.
Yes, thank you. For report 4.1, we're actually going to pause that and we're going to bring it back to counsel during the next week's council meeting, okay?
All right, thank you.
Yeah. Report 4.2 is related to an application to the Federal Economic Development Agency under the Ontario Regional Tourism Relief Fund. This is an envelope that has just opened up and the report is that council authorized staff to do a funding application and to be responsible for any cost overruns associated with this project. This funding envelope came out of a need to recover in the tourism industry due to downturns from COVID. And it's really to, for an organization to adapt their operations and facilitate growth and position Ontario to be a destination of choice both for domestic and international visitors. Staff feel that this funding envelope fits very, very well with other, the other marketing project that we have related to the brand, the website and the one-year marketing strategy. The city does not have to spend any extra money to get it, the $100,000. We're able to leverage the branding project and some of the monies that are being spent under the MAT project for this year. And if successful, what we will do is we will going to create a number of different videos and virtual reality videos that allow us to leverage the other marketing assets that we have to just further spread the word and make it that much more engaging for audience.
Counselor Smith?
Yeah, I think this is a great opportunity for us and you're right, it'll dovetail really nicely with our new branding and, and the exercise that we just went through. And I hope that we're going to look at, and I've said this at the table before, is our marketing and our promotion of our brand. We, we need to do a better job of controlling that message. I think this is a tremendous opportunity to go out for an outside resource to handle that communication because I think that it's going to be very important moving forward that we're sending out the right message and that it's developed by people that have that expertise. I think it's important for the city. So I'm hoping that there's consideration for bringing in an outside resource to do, if we don't have that talent in-house, to do that marketing and promotion.
Yeah, so this specific funding envelope is related to creating video and virtual reality tools, which is basically 3D, 3D video with that set on. Under the one-year marketing strategy, we're developing a very robust targeted strategy in terms of who we're trying to target and how we want to communicate with them. In addition to that, under the longer-term view of MAT, we've got projects aligned in subsequent years that would see us have professional writing being done and professional photography is actually doing stock photos for us. So we're continuing to evolve the content all the time so that we're not starting a brand.
Yeah, that's great because I think that's what's needed now. We have a great brand and now we have to do a very professional job of the promotion and the marketing of that. So good work, Stace. Thanks.
I appreciate the judicious use of the MAT tax. And a reminder again that that's a user fee, but that's not a user fee to the locals. That's a user fee to our visitors. And we really very much appreciate how much we can, we can grow beyond that. So good work from there. Do we have time to continue or do we want to take another, take a break? Leave it at that?
Yeah.
Yep. We'll take a short break. We'll take a short break. Back to you.
Bring the meeting to order.
Doing a good job.
Thank you. All right, I'll bring this public statutory meeting to order as per Requirements Planning Act 1990, P. 13, Section 34. Land acknowledgement, Counselor Smith.
That's me. As we gather, we recognize that we are in Treaty III lands which are steeped in rich Indigenous history and home to many First Nations and Māori people today. We continue to be thankful for the partnerships with Indigenous people. We give thanks for the many blessings we enjoy in the city of Kenora. We seek wisdom in our minds, clearness in our thinking, truth in our speaking, and always love in our hearts so that we try always to unite the citizens of Kenora, let these principles guide us in our decision making.
Thank you, Counselor Smith. Ask for a council declaration of pecuniary interest in general nature there on today's meeting or from a previous meeting or from a meeting in which your member was not in attendance. And non-declared applications being considered. Zoning bylaw amendment D. 14-22-01, civic address 371 Strecker Road, registered owner, Kenora Chiefs Advisory, Inc., agent JCP Planning and Development. Now we can have the applicant presentation. Or is it a fall?
Yeah, it doesn't come to the room. It was out to people wanting to.
So I should use it?
Yes, you should.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. My name is Jeff Port. I think I know most of the people here. I've been retained by Kenora Chiefs Advisory to provide professional assistance with their application to rezone their property. But they recently purchased 371 Strecker Road. I think most of you are familiar with it. It's really at the intersection of the bypass and the Jones Road. It's a considerable size, and we'll get into that in a moment. Before I give my technical part of the presentation on behalf of Kenora Chiefs Advisory, there are a couple of us here today. What I'd like to do is ask Joe Barnes if he could give council and the public a bit of an overview, kind of a big picture synopsis of the recent property purchase and what Kenora Chiefs Advisory plans to do with the property in providing programs to Indigenous youth, both in the community and throughout the district. And then Stephanie Bryant can talk a bit about the programming. And then I'll close off with a very brief overview of the application to rezone the property. I'm going to keep my presentation as brief as I can and just highlight on a couple of the issues that remain outstanding as of today. And I won't go into a great amount of detail because I believe after I talk about the application, I believe the city planner will be going into it in a lot more depth than I will, so I won't take a lot of time with that. But Joe?
A little shorter than I had. Good afternoon, Deputy Mayor, councilors, members of the public. My name is Joe Barnes. I'm the Executive Director of Kenora Chiefs Advisory. And we had a vision all about 10 years ago about creating a camp for First Nation youth. And we searched far and wide. We went to On Sound and Toronto and places like that looking for property. And then this property all of a sudden came up two years ago, and why not have it here in Kenora? The concept that we have is to use culture, tradition, knowledge sharing, along with sports and recreation, fun activities, to build bridges between two cultures. The folks can have the opportunity to know each other in-depthly, have fun together. The camp is not only for First Nation youth, it's for all youth and all families. We've had a lot of schools out there recently, approximately 200 to 300 students a month, both Indigenous and non-Indigenous coming out just having fun. I see, and our chiefs, we were looking at a national powwow to kind of bring people from across Canada to this area, to know the history of the area, to see the good relationships that we have with both non-Indigenous and Indigenous people. Our KCA works closely with folks experiencing trauma, a lot of folks with suicide ideations. And this camp, to date, has created opportunities to open up engagement with those youth and those folks that are attempting suicides or suffering from trauma. It used to take our staff anyways, sorry, four to six weeks to actually get a child to open up. Now, within a half hour of going down and visiting our horses down at the horse farm, they're starting to talk to our staff. We've had police officers bringing people off the streets down and working with us out in the property. You know, I hear a lot about, you know, the homeless and how can we help the homeless? Well, this is an area where we can bring them out, sit around the fire, find out where they are in life, and how can we support them going forward. So this camp opens up a lot of opportunities for a lot of good work to be done, most of all for people to have fun. And not everybody fishes, not everybody plays hockey, but this is a camp where you can just go out and have fun and forget the world, leave the world behind you, and that's how you build relationships. So thanks for listening. Big words to everybody online, and I'll turn it over to Stephanie, she'll give a little bit of information on some of the programs that we've started and some of the programs that we envision out there. Thank you.
My name is Stephanie Bryant. I'm the Director of Strategy and Innovation at Okeemawawdun, Kenora Chiefs Advisory. To speak to some of the programs, I think the vision is just incredible, the master plan that we've developed through the work and engagement we've done with our communities, our youth, our elders. They've told us what they want to see in this land of healing and wellness. Specifically, how do we support our youth? How do we support them moving forward in a good way? As Joe spoke about the youth dealing with suicidal ideations, dealing with a number of factors, and that's why we sought funding for our new Step Up/Step Down program. So within this, it actually serves all youth across the North Region. Sorry, I'm dealing with a herniated disc right now, so I'm in a little bit of pain. But within this program, it is not just serving Indigenous people, it's serving all youth, so Sudbury and up. So we have six beds within this program that youth can come stay up to three months. So when you're dealing with a number of issues, this is either a step-up program or step-down as you reintegrate into communities or additional programs. In addition to that, we've already been operating our two-bed facility, which is Vanessa Wazi Swan, and so we're going to co-locate the two programs to create an eight-bed facility within this program. Those two beds, of course, we're going to allocate to our nine communities just because we see that need within the Treaty III area, the youth need that safe place to go to when they're struggling. And so that's just one of the programs. We're looking at equine assisted therapy programs as well. How do we get youth to open up utilizing equine? We have an entire section dedicated to traditional healing and wellness, as Joe spoke to National Powwows, but how do we also teach those youth those traditions, integrate in a sweat lodge, a teaching lodge, and all those teachings? That's just some of it. And then the recreational, I think everyone's excited about that, having baseball, hockey out on the land, the volleyball, swimming, teaching proper swimming lessons as well. As we know, within First Nations communities, youth are, it's drowning, the possibilities of drowning is 33% higher. So how do we teach those youth how to swim? That's not something that's always available in communities. This is a place to unite those First Nations communities that surround the areas. When we have our Right to Play program, Whitefish Bay, playing against grassy narrows, you know, that's a full day of travel to go there and back to play baseball. But what if they came to this one central area and they were able to stay there, they were able to have a cafeteria, a mess hall, where they get to know one another, as opposed to be isolating in their communities, which they have been within the past two years in COVID? This is really a place to unite those First Nations, but also bring in the Kenora area youth as well that have been utilizing. I know Beaver Bay is really excited about some of the possibilities. We're looking at a youth employment strategy program out there this summer. So we're getting youth out there. It's busy already. So how do we keep that going? How do we keep that momentum going and keep growing? So that's all I have to say. If you have any questions, just let me know.
So that's kind of the big picture about what the end use of this property is to be. It's a tremendous project, both for the city of Kenora and the Kenora District as well. And now we need to get into the nitty-gritty of what it takes for the city to rezone the property to allow these things to occur. It's not a complicated rezone application. It's actually pretty simple and straightforward. In fact, the zoning on the property now, and I'm going to go through the planning rationale, which is, again, just hit the high points. I'll leave it to Kevin to do the details. Right now, the zoning is rural. There are two extractive industrial designations on the property where they used to take some aggregate, some pit run out of it, be it for the bypass construction or their own use. And in fact, oh, and there's a strange tourism recreational zoning designation with a hazard attached to it that we couldn't figure out, neither the planning staff nor myself. That's where the Okino Farms barn, where they used to have the barn dances, in that facility. And there are two, off to the east on Black Sturgeon Lake, there are two environmental protection zones, and we've left them alone. We're just going to let them carry through. In fact, our biologist is working on that as we speak, just to double-check everything. So we're taking that zoning designation and actually making it more rural. The extractive industrial zones, those industrial uses, will disappear with this zoning amendment. The tourism recreational zone, which kind of was layered over the Kino Farms building, that will disappear as well. It will all be zoned rural because it's going to be a youth camp, and the types of uses permitted in the zoning bylaw match up almost perfectly with what Kenora Chiefs Advisory proposes to use this property for. We've had to tweak it just a tiny bit. Again, the environmental protection designations will remain in place, and if there are, there shouldn't require any additional protective measures, but, and I'll get to it in a moment, there is an environmental impact, a scoped environmental impact study going on as we speak. So that's what it was zoned, and that's what we proposed to zone it to. Now, in the planning rationale, which is a requirement of the rezone application process, I'll just hit some of the highlights. Some apply, some don't apply, but the, of course, I'm a planner, I have to talk about the legal description of the land. The legal description of the land is concession seven, part of Lot 16, parcel 7374, reference plan 23R, 6564, parts one and two. Kevin will probably repeat that in his planning report. The site history is interesting, and it has been in the Strecker family for three generations, I'm going to say, and it's always been a farm. It's always been a family farming operation all through the generations, certainly through almost all, if not all, of the 1900s and into the 2000s. So it's always been, it's always had a rural farm character to it. In fact, that's why it's cleared and it has so much pasture land. Again, the purpose of the application is to take those previous designations and give it another, again, a more rural designation that would appropriate, be appropriate for a youth camp for Indigenous youth programming. There is, in your package, I believe the planning department circulated, a conceptual plan for the property. Quite a bit of thought and work has gone into that. Some of the end uses will be, as was mentioned earlier, equestrian therapy, hobby farm or community gardening, an information and welcome center, recreational facilities, state-of-the-art baseball and softball dynaments, I believe funding with Jay's Care, correct? That's a big plus for, not just KCA, but for the area. Outdoor hockey rink is being worked on.
In partnership with the NHL.
In a partnership with the NHL. Volleyball court, I believe, outdoor volleyball court, some lodging, a ceremonial area, powwow grounds, an eco camp, we'll talk about that. We're going to give that a slightly different use. We're going to propose a slightly different use for that, would be a better fit for the rural area. There'll be some docking on Black Sturgeon Lake, not a marina, not a marina, it's not going to be a marina. It'll be docking for residents if they want to participate, use the beach area, and also for programming purposes. And I mentioned community gardens already. Compatibility, because it's being rezoned to, from an industrial use to a rural use, it's the type of uses that are contemplated, this property are compatible with the other rural land uses in the area. And in fact, it abuts the city boundary to the east, and on the other side of that is the crown land, Black Sturgeon Lake to the north, more rural land to the south before you hit the bypass, and rural to the west as well. So it's all rural in that area. This is a large piece of property. It's probably about 335 acres or so, plus or minus. It's big. It's two-quarter sections, so it's a very large piece of property. Has about 1,200, 1,180, I think 1,200 feet of shoreline on Black Sturgeon Lake. Impact on resources, none. The planning rationale asks for the four tests, that's for minor variance, that doesn't even apply in this case. We've supplied a site plan, a site sketch map. There are a number of existing buildings on the property, farm buildings, residents, the Kino Farms Hall. And we've provided some detail on that to the planning department with a site plan sketch, so that should be in your package. I won't talk about the provincial policy statements, although it is consistent with the provincial policy statements. Kevin will probably get into that. And official plan and zoning bylaw compliance. It is in conformity and compliance with the city of Kenora official plan. There's a couple fine points on that I want to talk about. And the rezoning where proposed would accommodate all the uses that are proposed by the Kenora Chiefs Advisory. It is not only in compliance with other city planning documents, it certainly, I think, plays a big part in the direction the city is headed, both in providing programs and services to Indigenous youth and the community at large, but also Aboriginal and Indigenous partnerships as well. This is a real building block and a stepping stone, I think, for the city of Kenora in terms of, in terms of where the city wants to be headed. Now onto the technical stuff. We had a meeting with the Planning Advisory Committee. It went two and a half hours almost. There was lots of micro-discussions about the programs that were difficult to answer because this is a zoning, and a lot of the questions were more site plan control stuff. But there were four major issues that kind of came out of that, with a recommendation for approval from the Planning Advisory Committee, but a few conditions that probably the city planner will outline. Our proposal here today is, I'm going to address those issues, and I will make a case to council that those issues have been mitigated or don't apply. The first issue was permitted uses. There was a lot of discussion around lodging and eco cabins. We went round and round and round. At the end of the day, what we've done is to say, well, forget the eco cabins and the lodging. As a permitted use, what we want added, which is not in the zoning bylaw in rural right now, is a youth camp. And I provided the city planning department with a definition of the youth camp. And the youth camp would cover all of these uses that are contemplated by Kenora Chiefs Advisory. So that's an outcome of the discussion with the Planning Advisory Committee and city staff. We had originally included eco cabins and lodging, but you're saying, okay, forget that, that doesn't really describe it that well. What we want to do is add a youth camp along with a general assembly area for the Kino Farms Hall, and I think it's called a place of gathering, and that's for the powwow aspect of the operations. So all the uses in your existing zoning bylaw were rural. With those three site-specific uses added, will cover off all of the programming that is proposed and planned by Kenora Chiefs Advisory. So that resolves that issue. There was, there is a condition recommended to council, that additional work be done on mining hazards. And when we did some additional work on this, the difficulty is that the mine hazards identified where they want additional work, A, aren't on the property, and B, aren't even in the city. They're to the east of the property, across the city boundary, in unincorporated area. And when you read the official plan in its entirety when it comes to mine hazards, you can put a condition like that on if it's, A, on the property, and it's perfectly appropriate and reasonable to have mine hazards remediated. If it's a plan of subdivision, you don't want somebody falling down a hole in the ground. Or even if it's on the KCA property, you don't want a kid getting hurt. But if it's not on the property, you're in a position to remediate identified mine hazards if they're on your property. But within the official plan, the intent of the official plan is not to remediate mine hazards that are not in the city and not on your property. So that condition, in my opinion, doesn't really apply, so it should be removed, and you're still in conformity with the official plan. I believe you had to read it in the entire context of the official plan. There are a couple things in the official plan that say, in fact, you have to rezone the property to a hazard designation, identify the hazard. Well, you can't do that in unincorporated. You don't have any control over that. So it's really designed for property that is subject to the application and within the city boundaries. So that condition should be removed. It doesn't apply. Additional, another condition, you'll probably hear later, more work remediating the aggregate pits. These are old, old aggregate pits. They're not under license of the Aggregate Resources Act, the old Strecker family, just to go out. I mean, they have all the gravel tied up out there, right? So they would just go out and they'd have these aggregate pits, and they would use them either for their personal use or for contracting out in construction purposes. So as part of the rezoning process, the city requested an environmental assessment. Kenora Chiefs Advisory agreed. Pension engineering was hired. They completed a stage one environmental assessment. There were no environmental issues flagged at all in the phase one environmental assessment. It came back clean. But my point here is, they specifically looked at the aggregate pits, and they determined two things with the aggregate pits. One is, there was no contamination associated with either of the aggregate pits from any industrial operation, so it got a clean bill of health. And number two, the property got a clean bill of health when it comes to health and safety on the property. So we specifically did the environmental assessment. The trigger for the environmental assessment were the two aggregate pits. That issue was addressed. That should not be a condition for more follow-up work because it was dealt with in the environmental assessment that was complete, and the property was given a clean bill of health. That's just piling on, in my opinion. So that doesn't need to be a condition of approval. The city of Kenora planning department has the environmental assessment, and that should, that does check that box. One last item, environmental impact statement. This was requested by the Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry, not initially by the city of Kenora planning department, because there were no triggers there either. However, when you circulate to a ministry, they always have something to say. If one's cynical, one would say, the Ministry of Natural Resources like to order these things because if environmental values are identified, then you are legally obliged to forward them to them, and they put them in their database. So it's a way for them to collect environmental values without having to spend a dime. Having said that, we weren't going to fight that. They want an environmental impact statement, we'll do an environmental impact statement. Ryan Haynes of Kenora Resource Consultants has already been retained by Kenora Chiefs Advisory, had done a lot of preliminary work from an environmental point of view. There were no additional environmental values identified in the preliminary screening. However, Ryan will go back and do a full EIS on the property, and if any environmental values are identified that have not yet been identified, they will be, and can be, they can be and will be protected through site plan control. We've done this in the past with the city of Kenora. If fishery and wildlife values are identified, say in a plan of subdivision, then you can use a site plan control document to say, no docks here. So if they identify some fisheries issues or wildlife issues, then the site plan control document, which we've been told we need anyway, can, can, is the exact appropriate tool to deal with anything that may come out of the environmental impact statement. So that doesn't need to be a condition of approval either, because we have the planning instruments to deal with that if something comes up after the zoning. That's okay. And I guess the final thing I'd say on all of these conditions is I know the planning department recommended a hold until all these things get done. And my point here today, and here's the written summary. That's the written summary of the presentation I just made that addresses all of those issues. So what I'd like to, I have one last quick question of the clerk. Heather, have there been any objections to date from the public?
I have not received, but Melissa may have through the planning division, but they haven't been forwarded to me.
Well, as of late yesterday, there were none.
Yeah.
And I don't expect there would be any as of this meeting today. That's the hard part. That's where planning gets hard, is if there are objections from the public, and it's completely appropriate then to kind of take things offline for a bit, meet with the public, have a discussion on the planning issues, and hopefully get things mitigated. If there are no objections, and I don't believe they are as of today, there won't be any. Today is the last opportunity that there are for objections to this particular rezone. In the 20-day appeal period should council, and I hope they do approve this, if there are any objectors, that's when they can get their act together to file an appeal. But there's no more objections after today. So that's, to me, the biggest planning issue that I believe will not be a planning issue. And that opens the door, I think, to bring this forward now to the next council meeting for approval. If we had, if we had serious objections, we'd have to kind of go offline and deal with that. So in summary, what I'd like to say to council here today is, we've addressed the issues that were raised by the Planning Advisory Committee. We've addressed the issues that have been raised by the planning department. They're not, we don't see any public objections to this application. There's no need for a hold. There's no need to put a hold on this. What a hold does is if you put one on, and it's approved with a hold, and there are conditions and studies that have to be done, then you've got to go out and do those, you've got to take three, four, five more months, and then you come back to council to take the hold off. That's not needed because these issues, there are That's not needed, because these issues, there are no outstanding issues in my professional opinion. So we would respectfully request that this application go forward to the next open meeting of council for approval. I think it's a win for Kenora Chiefs. It's a win for the city of Kenora and the city of Kenora Council. And it's a win for the community, and not just the community, but for the entire Kenora district. And treaty through area and beyond. I think that's fair to say. I'd like to thank you for your time. And if there are any questions of council, I know that's on the agenda for later, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Port. Now we'll go to city planner, his report and rationale. Kevin Sumner.
Good afternoon, everyone. And yes, I'd just like to first state, I do believe an updated version of the report was distributed by the city clerk. Certainly, I apologize, I was confident that I had uploaded the most recent version on Friday, and it seems somehow that didn't go through, so my apologies to council. Turning to my staff report, I'm going to skip past the recommendation and come back to that at the end. Because there's a few things that'll make more sense with, in the context of the rest of the report. So as Mr. Port has accurately described, the areas of that property that are currently zoned rural and MX extracted industrial and TRHL have tourist recreation, the hazard land exception zone, are all being rezoned, are proposed for rezoning to RU 53, which is rural exception zone, with additional site-specific uses. The original application requested community hall and place of assembly be added to the list of uses. And we'll be getting back to the list of exception uses as the report goes on. And EP protection zone as, environmental protection zone as Mr. Port indicated, is remaining in place. So Mr. Port has already accurately described the proposal in terms of the range of uses that's going to be in there, and I'll reiterate that. And I do note that the phase one environmental site assessment was attached for council information. And I will add that that phase one environmental site assessment was sent out to all commenting agencies along with the application, so all agency comments are made in the context of having access to that phase one report. And my report contains maps there, including a master plan richly prepared by Hilton Palace Frank Graham or HFC Planning and Design, which indicates all the intended uses of the location of the property. Turning to site history, so this is at the north end of Stricker Road, on the shores of Black Surgeon Lake. Measurements using our GIS maps indicate the property is approximately 124 hectares in area. And the shoreline property line extends for approximately two kilometers. And that would be if we went from point A to point B, the two ends of the property, it'd be a one kilometer as the chrome flies. But it does water it out, and if you measure the shoreline itself, it's two kilometers of Black Surgeon Lake shoreline, which is significant. And there also is Transcendent Natural Gas Pipeline that runs through the property. There are two areas, as mentioned, that are zoned environmental protection or EP. This indicates areas which have historical and natural significance. We did research these properties, go back through old documents, but being unable to locate any records to indicate when and for what reasons these areas were identified as requiring protection. But we did trace them back more than 30 years through that property's old documents, so that is a long-standing EP zone that's beyond the property. So some of them, as previously farmed was mentioned, and there's the two properties, some of the MX, that were previously used for aggregate extraction. In 1992, the only whole portion of the property, today the yard site, was meant CL1 or local controlled site specific to improve the operation of licensed dance hall and eating establishment for barn dances and similar events. The current, closest current or equivalent zone under the current zoning bylaw would be LC or local commercial zone. In 2001, the zoning of a large center portion of the property, including the area previously to CL1, and extending most of the way but not quite to the shores of the lake, was amended to TC or tourist commercial to allow for the establishment of RV campsite and guest cabins. And that zoning persisted for several years until the adoption of new zoning bylaw. The closest equivalent zone to that would be, to the present zoning bylaw, would be TRH, tourist recreational zone. And we don't know why that was sold back. It was part of broad mapping amendments that were made with adoption of new zoning bylaw. So we haven't found a rationale for that, but it was, it reverted back to, to the rural zone and the TRHL in 2004. So I did include in my report several images of the property. Many councillors had thought I'd change physical property themselves. And when I had time, there was less snow on the ground than in my photos, but that just provides some context. Maybe it is a very large site with a lot of, a lot of log going on, different locations of the property. Now, turning to legislative policy and C directives, I want to start with the provincial policy statement and then work our way into the official plan. So the provincial policy statement does contain policies that are supportive of what's being proposed here. Specifically point out 1.1.4.1 that states that healthy integrated and viable rural areas should be supported by building upon that rural character and leveraging rural amenities and assets, and providing opportunities for sustainable diversifying tourism, including leveraging historical home and natural assets. There certainly are natural assets on this property. And 1.1.5.3 states that rural lands, recreation, tourism, and other economic opportunities should be promoted. And 1.1.5.4, which states that development that's compatible with the rural landscape and can be sustained by rural service levels should be promoted. Now, turning to some policies that provide both a cautionary belt, and these will be included in our official plan, starting with 2.1.2.5, which directs that the diversity and connectivity of natural features in areas and the long-term ecological function and biodiversity of natural heritage systems should be maintained, restored, or where possible, improved. Recognizing linkages between and among natural heritage features in areas, surface water features, and groundwater features. And then there's policies in regards to aggregate and former aggregate operations. And again, this will be encoded in our official plan, but starting with 2.5.2.5, which states that in miller deposits of mineral aggregate resources and on adjacent lands, development and activities which would preclude or hinder the establishment of new operations or access to the resources shall be only permitted if, and this is again repeated as we get to the official plan, and we need to support it by saying essentially that the resource use would not be feasible, or if the proposed land use or development serves a greater long-term public interest, then issues of public health, public safety, and environmental impact are addressed. And so B and C are and, those both have to happen, or A, it's not feasible. And then in terms of rehabilitation, so if there's no good potential, and it's time to turn to rehabilitation, the policy states that it shall be required to accommodate subsequent land use, to promote land use compatibility, to recognize the internal nature of extraction, and to mitigate negative impacts to the extent possible. And the final rate rehabilitation should take surrounding values and improved land use designation into consideration. So then turning to the official plan, the majority of the subject property is designated as rural area, but most of the two areas being recognized as having aggregate extraction through the industrial area designation. And there is, the southern half of the property, if you look at the map, I included in my report, this would be the light hatching on that section of the property, is identified as a potential aggregate area. And then there's an area which you can see as darker hatching in the area south of the natural gas line that is identified as having high mineral resource potential. And there are two abandoned mine hazards sites that are identified in our maps. They are located, as Mr. Port had said, just outside of municipal boundaries. So you can see the symbols noting those 100 meters east of the property. So the rural area designation, they cover most of the property. We do recognize in rural areas that there's a variety of types of uses which can occur in rural areas of the plan. Turning to section 5.1 of the plan, and this is relevant when you consider the comments we'll hear in a few minutes, as I get to the response we received from NDM RF, Northern Developments Mines, Natural Resources, and Forestry. So section 5.1 does direct that when potential development may have an impact on or be impacted by one of the natural heritage features and areas described in that section of the plan, the city of Kenora may refer to the appropriate agency for comment. And as I mentioned, we do get those comments later. And then in regards to the environmental impact study, we do have a section of Plan 8.9.2, which provides direction for completion of a full site EIS. So we do have guidance in the plan on what to expect from the EIS when it is received. Now, turning to section 5.5.1 of the official plan, you'll see this echoes the provincial policy statement, so I won't go into this in brevity, but where areas are proposed for development close to going aggregate extraction operations, or where there's on or near those properties, you again have that, those points of proving that it's not feasible, or if the other use of the greater long-term public interest, at least identifying that issues of public health, public safety, and environmental impact are being addressed. And then 5.5.1C does give some guidance on rehabilitation to accommodate subsequent land uses. And it does say that final rehabilitation shall take surrounding land use and improved land use designation into consideration, and the word "collimate compatibility." And then 5.5.1G directs that development of those areas for purpose other than resource extraction shall not be permitted. And if it is permitted, the underlying designation will apply. So the rural designation would be applied if it's determined that the aggregate extraction is infeasible. And then finally, the last policy relevant to aggregate is 5.5.2B, which directs that the city shall require applicants for any proposed development within 1,000 meters of the abandoned mine hazard site symbol to consult with the Ministry of Northern Development and Mines, and that would be now Natural Resources and Forestry, regarding the nature of the hazard and to undertake any remediation measures as legislated under the Mining Act. Now, earlier, Mr. Port indicated that his interpretation wasn't just only to apply when it was on the same property and not when it was outside municipal boundaries. In other words, outside of municipal boundaries. I would say that requiring this consideration was within 1,000 meters. There's not too many cases where you could have the same property, the same owner, two points, 1,000 meter apart in the city of Kenora. I think it's clear that even when a property is under the ownership of the same owner as the area where there's a mine hazard, that it needs to be taken into consideration. And we wouldn't, I don't believe that we would show mine hazards outside of municipal boundaries on our official plan map if we were to take those into consideration. So that is certainly my interpretation of how we should be approaching those mine signals. Turning to the zoning bylaw, the majority of the property is currently zoned RU with those areas of TRHL and MX, as I've mentioned before, and the area of environmental protection. The RU zone allows for a wide range of uses and services to meet the needs of residents, businesses, and tourists. The RU 53 zone, as requested, would add community hall and place of assembly as permitted uses of the subject property. This aligns, in my opinion, with establishment of most of the uses identified in the master plan, with the exception, as mentioned by Mr. Port earlier, of the lodging and eco cab areas. So the application, as requested, would not have permitted, in my opinion, establishment of those uses. While I did qualify, in my opinion, with the fact that I certainly will consider additional information as it's made available. The HL overlay that's proposed to be removed from the PRHL on the existing map identifies that which are susceptible to flooding, erosion, or other physical characteristics which could cause harm to persons or lead to deterioration of buildings and structures. Our understanding is that the HL overlay was put in place due to the proximity of the MX zoned areas. And as it is, it currently severely restricts the establishment of new uses in the area currently zoned TRHL, and must be removed if development of the yard site is to proceed. Now, turning now to our big departmental agency circulation. So I will mention the ones, the comments that express no concern, but I will highlight the ones that did provide more extensive comments. So Bell Canada, there's template language here that appreciate their appreciation for being circulated, and note that they don't generally comment on things such as zoning bylaw amendments. But Bell Canada does generally comment on site plan approvals, draft plans of submissions, and draft plans of convenience. And we do anticipate a future site plan control application, so we will be certain to circulate Bell on that when it comes forward. Ministry Agricultural Food and Rural Affairs had commented that if the project involves work on the buildings or facility and requires a building permit that houses the horses, and there are more than five horses, then an approved inventory management strategy would require prior review issued from the building permit. The Ministry of Environment Conservation and Parks offered comments in regards to sewage treatment on the property, saying that the design flow is under 10,000 liters a day and is under the jurisdiction of the Northern Western Health Unit. They're also reviewing with our water compliance group if the drinking water system will be designated under MDCP legislation. Waste area and area imagery was stated by KCA to be a metals pile was cleaned up when they acquired the property. There are no distinct record of site condition triggers, but it is ultimately the city's decision whether or not to require them. And the city has determined that RSEs are required. Ministry of Northern Development Mines and Natural Resources. I will say that Mr. Port mentioned, in his opinion, the Ministry of Always comments. I would offer the counter opinion that in my time here, I found it rare for the Ministry of Northern Development Mines and Natural Resources and Forestry to comment on our applications. So, and they have provided the comment here with Bell with having had access to the ESA. So they have commented that they advise that an environmental impact study be requested to support the rezoning application as provided by, or for by section 5.1 of the official plan and section 8.9. The environmental impact statement should provide greater confidence that natural heritage policies of provincial policy statement are being followed. And due to the large size, 121 hectares of the subject property, diversity of habitat types, and the extensive shoreline drainage, which we reported 1,008 years, the property potentially supports significant wildlife, fish, animal species that risk habitats. And then they provide conduct information for SAR Ontario and vice, and the advice there on requirements related to species protection listed as threatened or endangered under the Ontario Endangered Species Act 2007. The Northwestern Health Unit commented that everything they've provided right now is being under the assumption of residential use, not commercial. But they all need to take a look at what is currently present and whether or not there will be impact from the change of use. There are currently two separate properties, so as long as they remain separate, it will allow them to have 10,000 liters per day on each of those two properties. And Transcendent Pipeline, so TCPL, though promoted, responded with information about the jurisdiction of the Canada Energy Regulator, or CER. I'll move forward to their comments that are more specific to the site, where they state that the TCPL would like to request the following setback provisions be included in the zoning bylaw amendment. A, a minimum setback of seven meters is required from any part of a principal building or structure from the edge of the Transcendent Pipeline right away. B, a minimum setback of three meters required from any part of accessory building or accessory... B, a minimum setback of three meters required from any part of accessory building or accessory structure from the edge of the TCPL right of way. And C, a minimum setback of seven meters from the nearest portion of the TransCanada Pipeline right of way shall also apply to parking areas or loading areas, including any parking spaces, loading spaces, stacking spaces, bicycle parking spaces and any associated pile or driveway. In addition, they highlighted some concerns regarding the master plan, which was included earlier in my report, one prepared by HDFC Planning and Design. And so they note that the outdoor hog unit is located on TCPL infrastructure and TCPL recommends it be relocated. Two, there is a portion of road that has not been started, which appears to be within TCPL's right of way. Roads are not permitted within TCPL's right of way and parallel road must be setback within seven meters for right of way. Additional details for the structures that are on TCPL's right of way must be circulated for review by TCPL, who would certainly do that with the site line control. And they asked us, please provide construction timelines as they become available. They also recommend that the applicant, remind the applicant of the requirements for written consent from TCPL before constructing or installing a facility across the lawn or under there right of way, conducting sound disturbance, ground disturbance within prescribed areas over 30 meters from the center line of the pipeline, driving a vehicle, mobile equipment or receiving across the TCPL right of way, or outside the travel portion of the highway or public road, using any explosives within 300 meters of the right of way or using the prescribed area for storage purposes. Now turning to public comments, notice of the application was given in accordance with section 34 of the planning act, or was circulated to property owners within 120 meters and advertised in municipal memo on April 14th and circulated to persons in public bodies as legislated. You can see a copy of that notice attached before. The Planning Advisory Committee had the opportunity to consider recommendations for the Application Council meeting on May 3rd of 2022, last Tuesday. And the minutes and relevant resolution from this meeting are included with the agenda package, attachments five and six, I believe. And as of the date of report, and since that time, I have not received any public comments. So turning to my evaluation finally, I do believe the proposed zoning method is appropriate for the future development of the property as described in the planning rationale and the master site plan, with the exception of the proposed lodging and eco camp areas. Both the provincial policy statement and the official plan contain policies supporting the zoning bylaw amendment, but caution that appropriate measures need to be taken in regards to development on or near former aggregate extraction sites and in proximity to identified mine hazard areas. Therefore, it's my recommendation that the applicants be required to provide confirmation that they have consulted with the Ministry of Northern Development Mines, Natural Resources and Forestry regarding the nature of the abandoned mine hazard site to determine if those sites hold any risk to the subject property. I am further recommending that the applicants provide studies by qualified experts directly addressing the former aggregate mining sites in the area currently zoned MX, confirming that those areas are rehabilitated to accommodate subsequent land use and confirming that either aggregate resource extraction will not be feasible in the area identified as a potential aggregate area, or that the proposed land uses create no risk for reasons of public health, public safety and environmental attack due to proximity of aggregate resources and will not hinder future extraction activities. The master site plan identifies equestrian therapy with a jetway, homies paddock, storage areas and farm filtration marsh and a hobby farm with cat bacteria and indoor aquarium center. One additional building which appears to be associated with the equestrian use was discovered to have been built in 2021, no building permit. And the property owners have indicated that they are taking steps to rectify this. The city of Canora is unable to assess whether any of the livestock uses require a nutrient management strategy and thus we must rely on the Ministry of Agricultural, Food and Rural Affairs as the regulatory authority. Based on the comments provided upon application for a building permit, nutrient management strategy may be required, given the act covering NMS is applicable law. So by applicable law, I mean it's something that under the building code may be considered in issuance of permit. The master site plan does identify two areas, which I mentioned before, will not be permitted under the zoning amendment as requested. That's lodging, area seven of the plan, and eco camp, fire gathering area, area 10. At the PAC open house, it became apparent that the property owner wishes to have these uses committed on the property. Following the open house, the agents submitted additional information regarding the proposed lodging and the appropriate proposed definition of a youth camp, which I've amended slightly in my recommendation, which I'll get to, as an additional permitted use, which has been incorporated into my recommendation. And I will mention too, there's extensive use discussion at the PAC meeting of the use of campground or including campground as a permitted use on the property. My report, when I prepared it, I initially, in the text you'll see before, you proposed including campground as a permitted use. With the tight timeline we had, when we came to the PAC meeting and then tonight, today's meeting, I have had opportunity for further discussions with my colleagues in the city and further consideration of the implications of including campground as outright permitted use. So I am retracting that portion of my recommendation and we'll get to that when I get to the detail of my recommendation. The Ministry of Northern Development Mines, Natural Resources and Forestry has identified the need for an environmental impact statement in accordance with the policies of the official plan. While the applicant has completed phase one of the environmental site assessment, the scope of this assessment is distinct from an environmental impact statement. Their focus is on impacts to natural habitats. So we certainly do feel that the ESA is, we certainly appreciate the ESA, but the EIS is further required and recommended as part of the whole inclusion. TCPL TransCanada Pipeline has identified the concerns I mentioned earlier regarding the planned and existing development of the property. Site line control will be required part of the property due to the nature and scope of proposed uses, its location on the shores of Black Sturgeon Lake and the presence of identified environmental protection areas. So considering the number and nature of those standard concerns, the application will only zone in accordance with section 8.3.3 of the official plan is believed, I can believe is advisable. This section states that where council uses a holy provision, the use of land may be restricted to existing uses until one or more of the following conditions have been fulfilled. I won't read through all those conditions, that's the exhaust of this, but it does allow provision for studies to address environmental constraints and assessments. So with that, I'll turn back to the, to my recommendation. So I am recommending that the application be approved as applied for with some minor amendments. And some of these were supported by the Planning Advisory Committee and some of these were developed by myself in consultation with the agent for the applicant. Following the Planning Advisory Committee meeting, as I considered the information that was presented at the meeting and how we could move forward and accommodate the applicants to the best we could while respecting the concerns that need to be addressed on the part of the seat. So I am recommending that it be amended to, the zoning of the property be amended to RU 53 as proposed with the site-specific use of a community hall, place of assembly and the addition of youth camp as an exceptional use and retaining the environmental protection zone with the addition of the site-specific exceptions requested by TransCanada Pipeline Limited. So I won't repeat those, I already stated them and reading out their comments. And I would further recommending that new definition for youth camp be added to section two definitions, that being defined as a facility designed for overnight accommodation for youth and staff, which may include multiple steel buildings designed to provide sleeping quarters without water and sewer services and/or a communal youth hostel. And I am recommending that they amend it, still be approved with the addition of a holding, a H holding symbol to the RU 53 zone, making that RU 53H. And that the holding symbol may not be removed and further development of the subject property may not occur until A, an environmental impact study has been completed with specific attention to the impact of the proposed development on the shoreline, marsh area, Black Sturgeon Lake water quality and wildlife, fish and other species that risk habitats. B, the confirmation was being received that the applicant has consulted with the Ministry of Northern Development Mines, Natural Resources and Forestry regarding the nature of the proposed mine hazard sites. And C, that a study or studies by a qualified expert were provided to the satisfaction of the city of Canora confirming that A, the area zoned, currently zoned MX and is directed industrial are rehabilitated to accommodate subsequent land uses. And B, that either aggregate resource extraction will not be feasible on the area of the property identified as a potential aggregate area, or that the proposed land uses create no risk for reasons of public health, public safety and environmental impact due to the proximity of aggregate resources and will not hinder future extraction activities. So with that, I conclude with my report. I thank you for bearing with me for when I was, I was a longer report than I've obviously delivered.
Thank you, Kevin. Now we move to a public comment. And any person may express his or her views of the amendment and a record will be kept of all comments. Any comments? Nothing on the screen? All right. Does council have any questions? Counselor Smith?
Is that where, for the council part now?
Yes. Yeah, we've streamlined the process, so there's not as much, not as much verbiage as we're used to. I'm very happy for that.
Well, let me change that. So yeah, I have, I am fine with Kevin's report. And I'm going to agree with Kevin about the holding zone. And I'm going to explain my reasons why. The environmental protection was a red flag for me on those two shoreline, those areas that have the environmental protection. And I agree with that an environmental impact study needs to be completed on that. And I'm going to go into my reasons why as we go through this. We point out that the PPS talks about natural features. We talk about the OP, again, talking about natural features and the need to protect them. So if I go back to the request from the Ministry of Natural Resources and I look at figure nine, the area of the eco area and proposed waterfront development, and I believe that's where the volleyball courts were going also. So it's evident that sand has been hauled in into that area to create, to create the opportunity to have those amenities there, specifically the beach volleyball. So when I look at that and I look at the surrounding area and I can only see a picture of that one EP area, it's clear to me that that is a marshy area. And I would hazard a guess that that is pike spawning, because those are ideal conditions for pike spawning and fish habitat and fish rearing. So I think that if you do the environmental impact study and consult with the Federal Department of Fisheries and Oceans, that's going to alleviate any of those concerns. I don't know what the flood plain is on Black Sturgeon Lake, but with this flooding right now, I would hazard a guess that that whole area will be covered in water right now. And when that water recedes, that sand is going to go with it. Where there's some shoreline that doesn't have sand there, there are, there's reasons there, you know, it will get washed away. So I think that you should observe what's going to happen there, because sand is the enemy of fish habitat and fish rearing ground. When you come to pike spawning, the marshy areas are what they, what they spawn in and they rear their young. When you add sand into those areas, that destroys that habitat. And clean rock is primary for walleye spawning. So we're all resources, we're all stewards of the land and environmentally conscious. I think that we need to be concerned about that area. And if we have the, if Ministry of Natural Resources is commenting that we should have that EIS done, I think it's a good thing to have that done. But I also think, and Adam and Kyle, I've asked before, that on the agency circulation list is, these files where there's shoreline development, not only do they need to be vetted by the Ministry of Natural Resources, etc., they should be going to the Ministry of Fisheries and Oceans. We had a file last year that clearly warranted looking at by the Ministry of Fisheries, the Federal Department of Fisheries and Oceans. And I'm asking again, that you put that, that department on the list of agency circulation. I see, this is a red flag for me and it's all about the environment, because we all are stewards of the environment and we want to be environmentally conscious. So I would suggest now that staff or the proponents take a picture of that site now and see if the flood level has risen to cover that sand. And when it recedes, take another picture to see if that sand goes with it and keeps washing away, because that is going to continue to, going to continue to happen. And we want to ensure that we're not going to negatively impact on any fish habitat including nursery rearing spots. So that to me, I think is, I think that holding zone needs to apply. And I obviously think that the consultant in his report, and I will be looking for that if I'm at the table when the holding zone comes back, that Fisheries and Oceans has been consulted to ensure that we're doing the best environmental practice on this area as possible. So those are my comments.
Thanks for those comments. We'll make sure that that happens.
Thank you.
We love our friends at Fisheries and Oceans. We'll make sure they're more included.
Well, we're all stewards of the environment and we want to do what's best. Thank you, Carl.
Does council have any more questions or comments? Ms. Rameshman?
I think my comments are short. I very much appreciate the, and acknowledge the comments at the beginning regarding the value of this, this project and this initiative, particularly the vision. And Joe, I know you and the board have been talking about this for a long time. I think my, my primary question that I had coming in today has been responded to, and that's through the definition of eco camp and lodging. That was kind of an outstanding from the PAC meeting last Tuesday. For me, I'm just, I'm going to consider the comments that were shared today and Kevin's revised report and information. And as the week evolves, if I have any questions, I'll, I'll put them out there to get them resolved. So I appreciate today's discussion and thank you.
Kyle?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. I just had a question and I'm not sure who to direct it to. And I recognize that this isn't specifically pertaining to the rezoning today, but I think it's germane, just given the scope and the ambition of the project. You know, I have had the good fortune of visiting the site. There's, there's a lot of work being done. There's a lot of work still to be done. I'm just looking, I'm interested, has the applicant applied and remitted payment for all the required permits through the city of Canora Building Department for work that has either been completed or that's being progressed currently?
I can answer. All of them. There was a tax shed built. I actually, we contracted Chernel and Chernel, I thought he applied for it and he thought we did. So we're rectifying that and Kevin brought that up in his statement. So that's out there. All the other ones have been applied for, subjects, we just renovated the mess hall that used to be an operational facility as well. So all that was done by Chernel.
You had some other comments as well, Joe?
Yeah, I did. I wanted to speak to Counselor Smith's comments on the sand. I too, I come from the Scottish, so I did a lot of building when I was previously and I respect the environment as well. And when we look at the environment or the terms that we're talking about, it's pure sand. If you take a boat out into that water, which I've done, it's pure sand, 300 feet up. So there's no marshy area there that we've touched by sand. And that, that beach, as it is, had picnic tables on it and it's utilized by all people on Black Sturgeon. Matter of fact, I go down there every weekend in the summer and talk to them and they're elated with the work that we're doing and they're thankful that we made it more appropriate for them. And they're enjoying it and they want to play football in those parts. So where the sand was put for those parts wasn't in that marshy area. That marshy area is protected and we want to protect it, because if you look at the zone plan, it's a teaching area. It is natural. These are natural medicines within that marshy area that the First Nations elders and I have, you know, recognized that they're there. And we want to be able to use that to teach people. So we want to protect that area as well. So for sand going out and disturbing any rocky area, you'd have to go out, I don't know, like the rocks are to the left up there by at least 200 feet and out into the water. But that area is pure sand. So we're not disturbing anything by putting sand in. I just wanted to comment.
Thanks, Joe. I appreciate that.
Thanks for the clarification, Joe.
To find some supplementary to that, to Counselor Smith, our biologist, who's already done a lot of work on the property and is engaged to do a full EIS, he has already examined that marshy area where the volleyball court is proposed in great detail. He and I discussed it at least a half a dozen times to determine whether it was of value that needed special protection. And his qualifications are beyond reproach. He has indicated time and time and time again, it is not a northern pike nursery and spawning area. It has some value in stormwater management on the property as a whole area. But in terms of fisheries, nursery, and spawning area, that is not a value for that area. Having said that, he is engaged to do the full EIS, to look at it again. But it's not a red flag. It was a yellow flag, which is now a green flag for us, because Ryan did, you know, signed off on it as not being, we'll raise it with Ryan to have him take a semi look at it. But I can tell you, it's already undergone quite a bit of study. And it is not an area that requires protection in terms of fishery spawning and nursery area.
Any further questions? Counselor Chase?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just, I just appreciate the conversation here to understand what's going on. I mean, I think there's a temptation to be a little onerous in putting these types of restrictions for development to happen. And I think while it's important that we value the environment, we also have to look at the value of what these programs, what this facility offers, and how important that is to the bigger picture. So I personally do not support putting the hold provision on this. I mean, I believe you guys are doing the environmental impact studies. I believe in Ryan's reputation and the science that backs up what he does. And I think we have adequate controls of site plan agreements and site control agreements that if stuff does come up in that EIS, it can be mitigated. So, you know, I really respectfully, Counselor Smith, like I understand where you're coming from, but from where I see it, there's, there's a bigger picture to see this project become successful, and for the city to really show some leadership and some compromise to allowing this development to succeed, instead of putting up more roadblocks and making development more difficult. So I commend you guys for the vision that you have for this property. You have my full support. I think this is a great, great opportunity for, for not just the First Nations communities, for downtown business owners to help bring people together. And, and you know, our biggest, some of our biggest goals and aspirations are to bring people together, are to have reconciliation. So I don't want that to be lost, because we're hung up on arguing about whether the sand has an impact or not. I mean, there, an EIS is going to happen. So, so let's, let's try to be mindful of what that bigger picture is and not get hung up on some of these small planning details, which I think the applicant's agent has been very diligent at pointing out shouldn't be roadblocks to making this type of a project happen. So I want to see this happen. I mean, we've all been out to that property. The opportunity there is unbelievable, that the fact that you guys are making this investment in our community, I appreciate it, and a lot of people in this community appreciate that. So thank you for your leadership.
Any further comments? Joe will give you another shot.
I just want to make one last comment. Maybe I should go speaker for people in here. But as you know, we are pretty aggressive as an organization, and our chiefs are. We've got the CJC building down here, and we're turning that into the Community Justice Center. It's going to be beautiful when it's done, but it's all about healing, healing people that are hurt. And part of that process is, we applied for a step up, step down program. And this is putting pressure on us. There's only two applicants in all of Ontario that were successful. And that was to deal with the youth that is suicide ideations. We have been awarded 1.4 million or? $1.3 million to provide that program. But we need a building. We need a building, and that's where that house is out there. We need to get that done. And if we don't get, if we put a hold on this, I won't be able to build that building, and we'll lose that funding, and we'll lose that program. And that program is set to save lives, guys. So whatever needs to be done, we'll do it. Whatever assessments have to be done, we'll, we'll do it. But if we put a hold on this, we could lose that program. And that program's needed here in Canora. It's needed for our First Nations. I have no other place to put it. With that, let me go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Counselor Smith?
That Joe raised, the whole designation, and Kevin can clarify this for Adam, doesn't, doesn't hold up the development for what you're, you're planning on doing. It's just there's some couple of requirements that need to be, that need to be fulfilled, and then that whole designation will be removed.
Yes, but that's not exactly correct. We met with, with the architect and the developer, we met with the planning staff and had this exact discussion. That's why we set the date for May the 3rd, and why we set committee of the whole and the statutory meeting for May the 10th, so that they can make the application for the building permit. What's at risk here is if there's a hold put on it, then the zoning's not done, right? The zoning's not in place for the hold. The zoning is not in place for the hold. Only the previous uses are enforced with a hold. So then, with all those other conditions, which I argue were not needed, especially with the EIS underway, and site plan control is a tool to implement the EIS, it can drag it out for months, and that's Joe's concern, by dragging it out, getting, trying to get something out of Northern Development and Mines. What was the, trying to get another study done on the aggregate pits, which we've always already dealt with through the environmental assessment by pension. One month turns into two, turns into three, the zoning's not in place, no occupancy permit, and a project can fall apart. That's why we set these tight deadlines in working with the planning department. The hold was not part of that discussion. The hold somehow came later. And that's why we worked that too hard to make sure that the environmental assessments were done, we agreed on the EIS, the pits aren't in there. These, these conditions, in my professional planning opinion, have already been met. And, you know, give each opinion the way it deserves, but a hold is a problem. You can't say it's not a problem. It is.
Okay, thanks for those comments. So I would turn, I have a question for Kevin Sumner, city planner, then. So I've heard, you know, I've heard the applicant's version of how they see it. In your view, Kevin, the program that Joe has laid out, is it, in your professional opinion, that would not be able to move forward if a holding provision was put on the zoning application? Can you speak to that a little bit? That's really the issue that's under conversation.
Yes, so the holding permission as it is would prevent any future, any further development of the property until those conditions were met. So, you know, so any, any new use of the property would be upheld until, and any related permits would be upheld until the holding provision was settled. Certainly, we wish that this application, that application had been received earlier.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that, Mr. Chair.
Adam Smith?
No, I can speak a little bit to the holding provision as well, in terms of what's distinct when it comes to, say, for a zoning by law amendment process. So when the conditions are met, that it's not, it's not an item that would go directly back to, say, the Planning Advisory Committee for another, basically the full, fulsome type of review. It does go straight to counsel. Further, in terms of lifting of the holding provisions or the, the conditions as well, it's not appealed, or it cannot be eligible for appeal. So that does mitigate some of the risks associated with, say, if you do have, as it stands right now, if there's something like an EIS to which somebody's concerned about, files and appeal, it could be, you know, detrimental for even making this more of a longer term type of problem. So that's just a little bit of background, just in terms of the, the holding zone and the process that would follow, is in which we would, we'd have, have to organize another just public meeting and get it approved in that manner. But it does not go back to the Planning Advisory Committee after that point.
And so just in the interest of full information, Joe, what's your deadline for that funding? Just so we have all the.
It needs to be implemented immediately. We're really pushing it. So we're really hopeful that we can get this building running. And, you know, the need is there for the use of the north. Again, we're the only approved step up, step down facility with an entire North Region, and they are paying out for this, so.
And to Kevin's comments of putting in the application sooner, the call for proposals came out of my answer to the call. So we didn't put it, because we didn't even know. And then they approved our, so what do we do? Do we go buy another piece of property, put the facility there, then relocate it? Like, that's a huge expense, and we just can't afford it.
Yeah, no, appreciate you walking through that with us.
And there are, I mean, there, we, there's the, there's the design and tendering of the hockey rink. There's the design and construction, and some work is already started on the ball fields. All that stops.
And we have some important partnerships. Like, we have the NHL partnering with us here in Canora, helping us build this outdoor arena. We have the Luton's helping us. We have Save the Children Canada and Save the Children International working with us. Like, this is making, putting Canora on a path. It's not just ACA, this is a community project.
You've made a strong case. This will come back to counsel next week. Thank you very much. Have a motion to adjourn?
The meeting just, the public meeting is just closed.
Just closed? Meeting's closed.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Resolution number two, moved by myself, seconded by Counsel Poirier, that the Committee of the Whole shall adjourn no later than four hours past commencement of the usual nine o'clock meeting time and further than the event that there's a need to continue beyond the hour of one o'clock in the afternoon, and a unanimous vote of members present is required. And further, that council hereby supports the extension of the Committee of the Whole meeting to conclude no later than 5:00 p.m. on May 10, 2022, to conclude all matters in the Committee of Whole agenda.
In favor? And here's hoping we don't have to do another one.
Stace, sorry for slowing up your momentum there.
All yours.
All yours, Stace. Ready to roll.
So, Council, the report before you is related to a budget amendment for the Art Center balcony. It's related to some water damage that's taken place there. And as such, we need an amendment to the 2022 capital budget. Essentially, what happened is, if you're familiar with the entrance there, there's a balcony on top of the entrance. When they constructed the stone veneer there, on the outside of the building, it's concrete. So the concrete sort of adheres a certain way. And on the inside of the balcony, they actually put some plywood, some cement board, and then they put stone over top. And what happened was, two things are sort of... One of them's moving and one of them's not, which created the crack. And then, once the crack occurs, then if you have driving rain, the water gets in there and it starts to cause damage. So, trying to explain to you what's going on there. I've given some pictures to help illustrate what's going on. But essentially, what's happening is water is getting in behind the stone. It's sliding down the masonry there, or not the masonry, but the cement board. It's hitting that light fixture and then it's just following the electrical conduit going into the building. So we have no other choice but to remove everything that's up there. We're going to take that inside wall of balcony. We're going to furrow it back a little bit, so that will create a natural drip ledge. With the top capping stone, we will eliminate all the lights that are in there because in the future, it's just going to happen again. Water will find its way and then we'll seal it up and we'll get new stone and then it'll be done. You'll notice that I said up to $12,500 because we are still waiting for some costs to come in. So recognizing that we may be going into a lame duck, that gives us enough budget there to get the work done successfully.
Any questions? Christian?
At the board meeting, he said that the architect has a 15-year warranty and the contractor has a one-year warranty. So wouldn't the contractor or the consultant be on there for the hook?
The architect? I think that's a potential recourse. I haven't looked into that as yet. We've got a lot of weird environmental things going on right now and there are other parts of that building that are... There's some things going on there that we're looking at. So, the intent here is to get the budget amendment, get this repaired, get it logged. Similarly, we're assessing the other situations. And then, at whatever point we decide that we should either move that forward or not, we'll have that discussion at a minimum because it could potentially impact their insurance or discussions with them. We would have open and clear communication to let them know what we're doing and why we're doing it. So that there's...
Any other questions? Okay. Moving on. Quarterly report?
Thank you. This is going to take a moment to deal with me. When I... As I present this, I actually think about Counsel Poirier's question about metrics coming back as it relates to the asset management plan.
once a budget is passed, how we're progressing and closing off on some of those budget items. So, uh, in terms of what we've done this year, um, in terms of January to the end of March, uh, of course, we did break ground at Central Community Club, um, and that's, we're very excited about that. Uh, turning a page flip there, you'll see another view where you can actually see all the pipes that were found within, uh, reminding council that those pipes are the structural integrity that are both for the building and for the rink itself. Um, another thing that we've done, and you'll notice a common theme here, similar to what Marco had said, that a lot of the work that you do in first quarters relates to planning or tendering. So, uh, we were successful in getting the funding, uh, for, uh, Central Park Playground, uh, and so that has been, you're gonna see another report relating to, uh, getting approval for the P O for that. Uh, this is a rendition of the playground that's going to go into Central. You can see a view of the new, uh, rink, uh, the new, uh, clubhouse, where the beach volleyball is going to go, and then where the new playground is going to go. Uh, Counselor Smith asked a question about accessibility, and, uh, I can assure you that this meets all the accessibility standards. We are not going to use chips. We're going to use rubber mats in this particular case, which is good because it is easier for somebody in a wheelchair to maneuver around. One caveat to the visual that you see before you, you'll recall, council, that we had to replace the civic civil infrastructure underneath there, that was sort of shaped like a V. So, if you look at this playground here in this particular corner, we're actually going to separate that playground a little bit, so to allow for, if you ever needed to get in there, to, to work on the civil engine, civil infrastructure underneath, you'll be able to do so. So, that's the only difference there. Uh, cemetery, we had another record year in terms of the ice candle campaign. I think last year, we were up twenty percent year over year, and this represents another increase. Uh, we, uh, sold three thousand one hundred and fifty-four ice candles, and four hundred and forty-eight of them were veterans' candles, uh, so that's a really great campaign that we've started and recognizes fallen soldiers. At the museum, uh, we completed a very large LED changeout, uh, so these are fully controllable. Uh, it not only provides a clearer light, uh, for the eye, but it's also more energy efficient. We have been working with, and I'll get into this a little bit later, uh, our, our group purchaser to, uh, uh, to design and procure the new playground, the fully accessible playground from Norman. So, this is a rendition of what Norman is going to look like once it's completed. You'll, I will say that the covered canopy that you see there, kind of on the left in the middle, is where the washroom is right now, so we're actually going to be separating the playground there, just because the size of the mag, the size of the, uh, the playground is as big as what it is, so we're gonna totally utilize the space there. Uh, instead of having tile, uh, for the rubber membrane, it's actually going to be, I believe it's a part, or it's gonna be a one-piece rubber membrane, so it is quite state-of-the-art in terms of Norman Park. Uh, doing a page flip, uh, two projects related to Coney Beach. One is an accessible project. Uh, the second portion of it is adding extra capacity in there, which includes, uh, docking capacity that's going to be fully accessible. Uh, if you look at the higher drawing there, which is sort of like a design-type drawing, uh, where you see those little, uh, blackened areas, those are, uh, meant to be accessibility transition points, so somebody with a wheelchair will have the proper slope so that they can come basically onto the dock, up the dock, onto these little transition points, get onto the boardwalk, they can go to the Coney Island Music Festival, they'll be able to go in to use the washrooms and that sort of thing, and it's going to be very easy transitioning for them, so it's great. Uh, doing a page flip again, uh, just referencing the fact that we have taken over the White Cat Pavilion in terms of managing that, and with that, we've done some, uh, winter upgrades, uh, or we took advantage of the winter to do some upgrades to the washrooms that would have been built into the capital plan. Uh, there's a number of different projects that are listed down below, but again, you'll see a common theme of planning, uh, and, and some of these are very material capital projects. Uh, Rec Center Parking Lot, for example, one point six million dollars, and the Cloud Park One, that we've been involved in, the Rotary Park, that we're involved in that planning, and then a whole bunch of very large tenders, including the washrooms, uh, the fire services, um, the operations center renovations, uh, B A S upgrades, and the roof replacement for the Kuwait Memorial Arena, so, uh, staff have been very busy.
Stace reminded me, B A S.
It is building automation systems, so that's all your H vac control and that sort of thing. Uh, then moving to, into Josh's area, uh, we've got the, uh, launch of the new Destination Tourism brand, which we're very excited about. The website is supposed to go online, uh, really soon, and with that, uh, related back to the earlier conversation that we would have had, uh, we're, we're going to have a full-year, one-year, uh, marketing strategy with that. Uh, we did do one, uh, Winter Matioski's, uh, market. We had to close, uh, not have the one just due to COVID. Uh, we announced the expansion, uh, sorry, I shouldn't say expansion, I should say, announced the fact that we're going to be proceeding with a Phase Two for detailed design for the Rec Center for an expansion, and also a relationship with, uh, Science North that would see them take some space in the Discovery Center, so we're very happy about that and expanding that partnership. Uh, we completed the installation, uh, of the dehumidifier at the Rec Center. That was, was a result of funding that we would have received in August of last year, where the city had to pay no extra, uh, money for that, uh, funding. Um, just, again, page flip, speaking to some of the programming that we got going on, uh, and here's where it gets really interesting, is when you start to look at the numbers. Uh, we talk about recovery, uh, from COVID. In the middle column, you can see a full-year, uh, metrics on all the various activity that would have taken place by program, and look at how we're trending just in one quarter in two thousand and twenty-two. And it's important worth noting that in the first month of two thousand and twenty-two, it was closed. So, we're really starting to get some good traction from a recovery perspective, and these numbers really speak to that, so, uh, that's, that's really a good news story. Again, if you look at the, um, going to the rink rentals, you can start to see how we're starting to close the gap there, uh, particularly as it relates to the Rec Center. So, again, we're just starting to see that, uh, recovery taking place. Bottom of the page, it, it talks about community services joint marketing. One of the things with these quarterly reports as I was going through it is I was starting to look at the five-year economic development tourism strategy and also the strap finding, and now you can start to see us actually closing the gap on some of the things that we would have identified as being actions in those plans. So, uh, one of the things that we talked about, um, was that we were going to bring together, um, the marketing efforts of all the various departments within community services, so that it would be more robust and it would be more comprehensive and would have a common look and feel in the various buildings, so that if I go to the library, I can see that the museum's doing this and the Rec Center's doing that, because there's often a link where families are wanting to do things and, and go to the next activity. So, now we're bringing all of that, uh, advertising together and marketing together to give it a common look and feel, and as such, you know, we have coordinated a group scavenger hunt, uh, during the, uh, spring break, and, and people will get more points if they, or a bigger prize if they went to multiple buildings. So, it's just expanding the reach of the community services department. Bless you. Uh, this actually shows you what the, uh, spring break, uh, advertisement looked like, so we're very happy, and it's nice because all the departments worked together to, to create something like this. So, with that, that's the quarterly report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions? I've got one. How are we gonna measure, how are we gonna get the metrics for the tourism marketing strategy overall for bringing, bringing new visitors in? Are we gonna be able to track that? Do we have any provision for surveying?
We're actually, um, if you look at things in the marketing space, like search engine optimization and all those things, that would typically give you an inkling of how you're doing and how traffic is going through your site, um, we, um, that's a, that's an indicator, but it's not really a clear, clear indicator because it's, we're not selling product that is, you know, more dollars in restaurant, more dollars in hotels, that actually goes to other people. So, we're actually working with an organization right now, who's a leading-edge marketing firm out of Toronto, and, and trying to develop some mechanisms to, to measure traffic coming through our site and how it's converting, so that we can get some metrics that are more real. It's, it's dollar-for-dollar, it's kind of difficult to see, but we're going to take it and bring it to a different level, uh, which is gonna be kind of cool in terms of when we're able to report back. So, we're working on that, and it, we, it would be foolish for us to take, uh, traditional metrics and apply them to this situation, because we'd be getting a false positive or a false negative.
I appreciate that. I understand the foolishness of, of traditional metrics very well.
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, moving on then, I guess, to, uh, Coney Island Shuttle Agreement.
Yeah, so this report, council, is related, uh, to, uh, a recommendation from the administration that, uh, council enter a four-year agreement, which is called option number one, uh, with, uh, Green Adventures, uh, Lakewood Woods Marina and Service, uh, to operate the Coney Island Shuttle. Um, you'll recall last year that we operated the shuttle, uh, through MAT tax monies, the cost for that was ten thousand dollars. Uh, the recommendation before you is, is also for ten thousand dollars in year one, uh, and it's done so on a declining balance. What I'll do is I'll just review the, uh, the options, and then I can speak to why we're choosing or recommending option one over others. Um, the shuttle would, uh, be a scheduled service, so between certain hours, uh, that, um, pontoon boat would be dedicated to us. We can get up to, uh, four runs in there, so that's up to forty people during those times, and if you just look at the total metrics that we, uh, took for last year, and I think it was Counselor Goss that asked that we, uh, keep count of how many people were using it. There was five hundred and forty people that used the service last year. We're actually expecting that those numbers are gonna start to go up quite a bit now as it becomes more of a, a common service and people become more aware of it, and similarly with our marketing efforts, that we have that as an amenity. Um, we think that's gonna go up.
I think it's noteworthy too, Stace. We, it was after July one we started that service last year. It was a late start, right?
I, I, I think it was July along weekend. Well, I, I can't remember. It might have been a week late because I remember we were in a council meeting when that discussion took place, and there was a rush because COVID was just lifting, and we didn't know when the bound, the, uh, borders were gonna open. I don't remember the exact date, but it seemed, it felt late.
Point being, we feel like there's a bit more run on the season this year.
Uh, yeah, hopefully. I, I, I'd like to report back on that if you don't mind.
Sure.
Uh, so one of the things with option number one is the four-year. Uh, number, uh, second thing about it is, um, uh, the level of subsidy in subsequent years goes down year over year, of course, as they, uh, their business gets stronger and they're in a better position to, to fund it themselves. Uh, option number two is one where, um, they would just, uh, dedicate that pontoon boat to solely us and nothing else, okay? So, there's some, some values there. Based on the history that they experienced last year, the operator feels that, uh, option one is, is preferable, and I'll explain why right away. So, option two is designated, with that comes a little extra cost. Option number three is simply a one-year plan for twelve thousand dollars, or a one-year option, and it would be, uh, designated service as well. Uh, the cost, uh, for people to use the service is ten dollars for a round trip, and kids under three are free. Uh, the reason that staff feel that option number one is a stronger option is, um, the operator has said, uh, with a longer-term agreement, um, that they will, uh, be more aggressive in terms of the way that they're going to advertise it, and they've actually laid out what they're going to do, so you can actually see, uh, how they're going to be more aggressive in their, in their advertising. So, with more advertising, with more boat rides, more people who are going to activate Coney, which is something that we've really been after for a long period of time, and particularly when you start looking at the renovations that we're gonna be doing related to the docks and accessibility and that sort of thing, it's exciting that way. Uh, the other thing is, is that, um, there is time and effort that's required from staff perspective when we do these tenders, so if we do a four-year deal, we know that we're gonna be working with one vendor over a, a four-year period, so it reduces administration time. The other thing is, is that by having, uh, the ability for them to operate their own business outside of the hours they stipulate, it's another amenity in Canora for other people to come to Canora and do other things than just go to Coney. They might wanna do, uh, you know, lake tours and go through, you know, the yacht club stretch and through Kuwait and the channel, and then back through the gap or something like that. It gives the operator the ability to do so. So, from our perspective, we feel that option number one is the best option. I'm happy to answer your questions.
Counselor Smith?
Well, when we talked about keeping track of the number of trips last year, um, it was suggested that we actually track who's a tourist and who's a resident using this service. We didn't break it out though, right?
We didn't, but that's, that could be a metric, so.
I think it should be a metric.
Yeah, I, I have no reason with, I, I don't see a reason why we couldn't go back to Scott and get them to just do that tally. They're doing a tally anyway. Yeah, that's a good point.
Any other questions, comments? Personally, I feel they're shooting too low. I think we're shooting for too low of a, of a, uh, an uptake on probably the best beach in northwestern Ontario, probably a fantastic marketing. There's nothing like it in the province of Manitoba. We have a hell of a, a hell of a Manitoba pop, or, uh, tourism reach here, even for day trippers. I would like to see Coney Island seriously be involved with two to three hundred people a day, not per season, and I think that the only way around that is that we're gonna have to, at some point, this is personal, because this has been something I've been pushing at since the, since the mid-nineties. We need to get that back to what it used to be, and it, it, literally, it is the best, safest, cleanest beach that we have. There's, there's no problems with, uh, E. coli or anything there. It's a fantastic tourist, tourist opportunity that I don't think we're really valuing it enough, and I would personally be quite happy if we were to, next year, approach capital or, or operating rather, and say, "Give us thirty thousand dollars and we'll do a two-dollar a person trip." Because quite honestly, some of these groups that came down, uh, in the last few years would be a vanload of people, uh, who would stand on the dock and be making a calculation or they're gonna spend sixty or seventy dollars just to go out on the, on to the lake for that day, and I think that's, I think that that really does a disservice to what we have there. It's a true gem, and I, I quite honestly believe that we have never really, uh, fully appreciated what it is. I look forward to the day when, uh, whatever version of the beaches, parks, and trails comes back to us that says, "This is your location. This is where you wanna have a stage. This is where you wanna have, uh, community events. This is, this is what we are." This is, and it also brings in a lot of the locals who, we're talking about two dollars and fifty cents or two dollars and seventy-five cents for, for bag tags. There are a lot of, a lot of little young kids here who really don't have that opportunity. They can hike off to, uh, Norman Beach, they can hike off to Rabbit Lake, but there are a lot of people that were, who are at very low levels of income who would really benefit from this, and, and the benefit goes beyond just having them out there. That's a whole health, mental health issue, so I'd like us to start to, to take a serious look at making this thing a major, major attraction.
Yeah, um, good points, and, you know, as we have more docking capacity, as we have a website that speaks to the experience, if we're successful in getting the money towards videos, we can actually illustrate that sort of thing. Uh, there is talk of, we only got one proposal, or one submission for this particular application, but new competition coming in that wants to do boat-type services. You start getting, you know, more boat taxi services and, and more ability to easily park out there where it's accessible because somebody's with a walker or a wheelchair or, or just wanting to go out there. We're, we're, we're expanding the amenities there so we can actually handle more capacity.
I understand that, but again, that's, that, that boat docking probably for the most part services people who are already invested twenty to thirty, forty, fifty, sixty, a hundred thousand dollars on a boat, and that doesn't apply to, to the majority of the population. So, I, that's, that's mine, and I'll, I'll continue to push on that. I've been pushing at it for twenty-five years now, and I'll continue until they get me out of here.
I think, I think I saw the Liberal Party leader promised a dollar for everything, so we should see if we can get in or not.
Falls under transportation?
Yeah.
All right.
All transit.
Anymore? No, I did enough. Uh, four point six, playground equipment purchase agreement.
Thank you. So, um, in the quarterly report, uh, you saw some illustrations of what, um, Norman Park and Central Park are going to look like as a result of new, uh, playgrounds that we've been working with our, uh, group purchaser, uh, to, who actually represents four hundred and forty municipalities, um, to procure. So, this report is to authorize staff to enter into an agreement, or sorry, authorize mayor and council, uh, to enter into an agreement, uh, for the contract for these two playgrounds. Um, we have found that the, uh, playgrounds, uh, because of COVID supply chain issues, it's a thirty-five week delay, so, uh, there is a desire to get this, uh, you know, locked and loaded as quickly as possible. Overall, uh, once landed and installed, the entire project, uh, is going to be four hundred and fifty-two thousand five hundred and eighty-one dollars. Um, I believe the, uh, deposits are somewhere in the neighborhood of, uh, a hundred thousand dollars. A couple of things with this report that I think are important. Number one, we, we did, we had Norman on the books. Number one, we, we did, we had Norman on the books. Council had generously donated $100,000 towards the project. We had a private donor come in at $50,000 and we applied for trillion funding. Council authorized staff to do that application. We were successful in getting that $260,000. We since found out that we got the additional monies from NOHFC for this project. So that one was already on the books. But one of the things that we've been doing with is working with LAS for Group Buy and they, they procure for all of the municipalities in Ontario, so that's 444 municipalities. We save 22% of the price of the goods by going through this process. So to Andrew's point earlier in terms of the procurement policy, having language that allowed us to do that, this is very, very important. And we're seeing that particularly in my area where we're doing this a lot. So it's a good news story. The second portion of this project was related to Central Park, which is new funding that's just come in. So we want to, we want to, what we've done is we've rolled these two playgrounds under one contract and we want to get authorization to, to give the deposit. If you do a page flip there, you'll see some good pictures of what Norman's going to look like and similarly what Central's going to look like. They're very impressive. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Looks like you're all good.
Could be some really amazing playground spaces running out. We're all set in that.
I, I'm not aware of any playground, particularly in Norman. And when you add in the additional $500,000 that we got for the Tox Interpretive area, that's a million dollars essentially that's going to go into Norman Park in the next 16 months. We are going to be able to market that as the, you know, a fully accessible park. That's pretty impressive when you factor in everything that we've done there. And I think it's going to be an attraction. And I'm not aware of another, you know, other than perhaps Winnipeg where it's going to be an amenity like this. And in Winnipeg, you can't, you know, go in a wheelchair and roll right into the lake and watch a floating water park. So this is pretty impressive.
Did you say, you said there's a 35-week wait for that equipment? So that's not this summer, it's next summer?
Correct.
Unfortunately.
Just, just one thing, Dad. I mean, I think it's pretty fantastic what you're doing with that park. For future capital, you know, looking forward to the next couple of years, I realize you probably already have plans, but I'd love to see a dock go in there so that the Coney Shuttle can actually make a stop at Norman as well because the amount of traffic that's there with children and kids and families who can park at Discovery Center, who go to Dairy Queen, go to the Railway Museum. It would be a very logical place to, to loop in some type of a circuit for the Coney Shuttle and use that as a pickup and drop-off location as well. So just throwing that out there, I don't know if that's on your radar or not, but...
Well, if I can speak to that, and that, that's part of the report that you'll see next week in terms of we did also get $500,000 towards docking. So there is a very robust plan that's been created that not only talks about maintenance, but also talks about bringing in additional capacity, including the Discovery Center, new capacity going into Norman Park, additional capacity going into Kuwait and Beach and a bunch of other locations. So it's, we're in a very fortunate position with getting that funding.
Perfect. Thanks, Stace. Great stuff. Moving to Development Services, item 5.1, Request for Closure of Roads and Declaration of Surplus Land, Aberdeen and Gray Street. Kevin, I guess this is you?
Well, I could, I could take this one and then maybe just have Kevin chime in if here and there.
Adam's got it?
Yep. So the intent of this report here is to close surplus and sell the identified lands being all of Aberdeen Street and part of Gray Street. It will result in revenue of approximately $16,000 to be put into the Land Development Reserve. Further, it also has the effect of supporting a new residential development in the community. What it specifically does is allows municipality to, or sorry, allows a proponent to meet the density requirements of the official plan based on the initial site plan provided. Otherwise, in the event, with the laws or in not proceeding with the sale of these lands, you would likely need to do an official plan amendment. So that is in essence the intent behind this report. Based on the deputation that did occur today, there has been a minor adjustment to the purchaser, the, the sale of Gray Street where a piece of that is being retained to still ensure that property owner has access to his garage, which is situated in proximity to the, to the identified lands.
Questions? Nope, we're good? All right, you take the second one as well, Adam?
Yep, sure. So this one, similar to the, the previous report, is a, the closure surplus and sale of a municipal row lounge being part of Railway Street. This is being, these, the areas surveyed or identified in the report are being sold to Enz Brothers, which is represented by two numbered companies. They will be proceeding with the sale on the basis of supporting the parking in the area. The sale will amount to approximately $22,500 for the municipality, which, similar to the previous report, will be going into the Future Land Development Reserve and also allows for any future expansive, future development opportunities that are available to the proponent on their, on their property.
Any questions? Nothing? Thank you, Adam. Yes, we're moving forward to Proclamations.
Do you want them?
Oh, it's not good here. Yeah, I can read this from here. Whereas the Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedoms 15, bracket 1, states that every individual is equal before and under the law and has the right to equal protection and equal benefit of the law without discrimination and in particular without discrimination based on race, national or ethnic origin, color, religion, sex, age, or mental or physical disability. And whereas in the 21st century Canadian society, racism and acts of hatred have no place in any of our provinces, territories, regions, towns and cities, and Canadians must come together to call all acts of racism and hatred. Yet there has been a dramatic surge in incidents of racism across Canada, particularly instances of anti-Asian racism across Canada. Whereas, according to statistics, Canada, police reported hate crimes against East and Southeast Asians have increased 301% in 2020. Whereas Stand With Asians Coalition brings allies together across our country to raise awareness and to combat anti-Asian racism by calling out racism where it occurs each and every time. Whereas, aiming to maintain our values as inclusive and racially diverse Canadians, we support the Stand With Asians Coalition to build stronger, more inclusive society where everyone can feel safe, happy and healthy. Therefore, be it resolved that May 10th, 2022, be hereby proclaimed as Day of Action Against Anti-Asian Racism in the City of Canora. Second proclamation, whereas childhood apraxia of speech is a challenging speech disorder that affects nearly 1 in 1,000 children, whereas children without, with childhood apraxia of speech will not learn to speak without frequent intensive and appropriate speech therapy. Whereas a lack of appropriate speech therapy intervention may impact not only communication, but also individual outcomes in education, independence, mental wellness and employment. Whereas public awareness with, about childhood apraxia of speech in the City of Canora is essential for families of children with childhood apraxia of speech and that the professionals who you, who support them to the best advocate for needed services for children learning to use their own voice, whereas our highest respect goes to children with childhood apraxia of speech and to their families for their effort, determination and resilience in the face of obstacles. Now, therefore, I, mort gahus, do hereby proclaim May 14th, 2022, as Apraxia Awareness Day in and for the City of Canora. The third proclamation, by virtue of authority invested in me, I hereby proclaim May 2022 as Bladder Cancer Awareness Month in and for the City of Canora and request its observance as such by our citizens proclaimed at the City of Canora this 10th day of May 2022. And can we have a motion to adjourn to closed?
Do you want to go around the table first, Mark?
Would you like some comments? Go ahead.
No, I don't.
We usually hold those for council, do we not?
No, we do at both.
Okay, we do at both? All right. Want to go around the table? Krista?
Okay, excuse me. Got a couple of words here, but we've all been getting questioned about whether or not we'll be running in the municipal election later this year. I for one will not be running, so there will be at least one opening. And I recommend this to any person who's interested in municipal politics. I've enjoyed my time on council, but look forward to watching from the sidelines all of the projects coming online. This time I'll stay retired.
Counselor Smith?
Oh, no comments today.
Counselor Works?
Yeah, just a short one. The library recently had a competition or contest for naming the mascot, which is an owl, caricature of an owl, stuffed owl. And the new name of the owl is Atticus, which I think is very appropriate for, for a library. And I think the name Atticus is related to an individual from the second century. I only looked up Google, so I'm not, don't want to sound like I'm very knowledgeable. But I think it's very appropriate for the library, wisdom, patience and observance. So good work on the part of the library for coming up with this as part of their promotion and continued community activity. Thank you.
Counselor Chase?
No comments, thank you.
Counselor Poria?
Nothing, thank you.
I would just like to echo what I had said earlier. I really, really appreciate the work that's going on with our, with our city crews. This is beyond the pale and probably continues and will continue to be beyond the pale. So I would ask that all the citizens of Canora just take a breath, relax, understand that everybody's triaging. Staff are worked to the max. What staff is still able to work, there were people who are off for various reasons. Things are really out of control and our staff is working as hard as they can, are just getting updates on these roads daily. There's a lot to be done and people are doing everything that they can. Triage is the, is the word of the day and we're doing the most important thing that affects and impacts the, most people first. Other than that, I'm finished for the chair today. Motion to adjourn.
Resolution number three, move by myself, second by Counsel Ben Wellingham, that pursuant to section 239 of the National Act 2001 is amended. Authorization is hereby given for council to move into a closed session at 3, 2:21 PM to discuss items pertaining to the following, labor relations, two items, workforce complement, education and training, two items, McCall Park design and CAO update.
In favor?